All right, the time is 5:00. I'm going to call to order the Committee of the Whole for April 7, 2025. Clerk Boak, could you do the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Palivanoglu?
Present.
Councilmember Garza? Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson? Seven members present.
Thank you. And we have the minutes for March 24th. Vice President Carter?
I make a motion to approve the March 24 minutes as presented.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. If anyone is in the audience from the public who would like to speak, you have up to three minutes, and please step up to the podium. And if you could share your name for the record, we would appreciate it.
Greetings, Council. My name is Dan Doyle and...
CTV, the microphone. Sir, can you try to hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? All right. Greetings. My name is Dan Doyle. I'm the attorney that's representing Synafold at CDDM Corporation.
Hold on just one second. We've got an...
My name is Rick Johnson. I'm the manager of CDDM Corporation since 2011, and I just want to reiterate...
Pause for just a second, sir. We've got an echo again. Can you try it again?
Okay. Rick Johnson, manager of CDDM Corporation since 2011. Just reiterate what Dan had said, that we never received a notice. I received a notice when I got into work at 9:00 on the 26th. And there are some things in here that... Because the current licensee didn't take over until 2012. I just noticed some things in here in this report regarding 2006. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public? Seeing no takers, we are going to move on to item five, presentations. The first up is going to be fiscal year '25-'26 budget overview, fees, revenues, fringe, and that is going to be Mr. Jake Brower, who's coming down right now.
Good afternoon, and thank you for inviting me. Through the chair, I'd like to present the FY '26 proposed budget for the City of Lansing. I sent a copy of the PowerPoint to Sherri Boak, admittedly fairly late to print out copies of your own or send it to the... And it might be something that is now presentable, but let me know if it's...
You just sent it? I'm sorry. I just got it at 5:00 today, so City TV probably doesn't have it unless you sent it directly to them.
No worries. If you want to send it to them, otherwise I'll just get right into the package and we can include it online for the public to be available. Overall, looking at the budget book, I thought I'd start the presentation just really describing how to read a budget book. So overall, when you look at this document as a member of the public, it is 200 pages that can seem pretty intimidating as to what it describes about the City of Lansing. But fortunately, as a public document, this gets much simpler as you break it down into individual sections. So as you open up the budget book, you get into the introductory pages. And so if you want to ask the question, who runs the City of Lansing? How is the City of Lansing organized? You can see all of the directors of various departments, the various relationships between the voters of the City of Lansing, electing various officials to represent them as part of the mayor's office, the 54A District Court, the city council board ahead of me, and the various appointed departments and their relationship there. Going into the table of contents, you can find any specific section as may interest you for a particular department or subject. And then really, a great place to start across any budget book would be the letter of transmittal. This is really the policy message of what is the content of the budget book, what is being shared as new, different, noteworthy, that is worth paying attention to. In this letter of transmittal as well, we respond to many of the items that are discussed as part of the council budget priorities. Following this, we go into our fund summaries. And so the organization of the City of Lansing's finances follows a governmental fund accounting structure. And so we have different sources of revenue that are accounted for in different ways, and these individually are called funds, of which the main fund is our general fund. As you get through the fund summaries, you'll find descriptions of what these are, a financial overview of their outlook, and then the description of the sources of revenue. From there, into the next section, you get into our department summaries, where you can find more contact and summary information for individual departments and directors, an overview of what the departments do on the individual level, and proposed changes as far as the budget goes. Then, as you get into the end of the budget book, you get to our affiliated agencies. These are agencies that are related to the City of Lansing but do not operate directly within our organizational structure. And lastly, you get to the final budget summary, being a description of our capital improvement program, a helpful glossary and acronym sheet to understand some of the common terms that are tossed around throughout the budget book and the City of Lansing operations. And lastly, the budget and fee changes resolution itself being proposed to this body. Going into the budget process itself for the City of Lansing, prior to October 1st, council submits a list of budget priorities to the administration. This kicks off the period of budget development, where the city council describes the mission, the things that it would like to see as far as the budget goes. And then we turn that information over to departments to say, what are the resources you believe you need for the upcoming fiscal year, and what would you like to request as being different or new? This goes into our budget development process for this year in particular, in which we adapted to the new software and capabilities of the BSNA software, where we had departments directly enter their budget requests into the software, giving them until December of 2024. Following this period, and with a few stragglers, we entered the technical review period of January to March, in which case we went through the various budget proposals, made an estimate of the available revenues for the upcoming fiscal year, and then balanced the budget between the various department requests and the available funds that were there in order to fulfill both the essential needs of the City of Lansing in trying to provide as much additional value as can be developed. Overall, that brings us to a few weeks ago, where we delivered the proposed budget book to the city council here before us. That is due by our charter to the 4th Monday in March, which kicks off the series of budget hearings culminating in the 3rd Monday of May, budget being adopted by this body. Going on to our budget assumptions, you can see a chart of our city's finances over our citywide budget. For FY '26, we're proposing a budget of $307.4 million, the largest chunk of this being our Public Services Department, followed by our next largest cost across the city being our retirement benefits. And then in order, police, fire, community development, general government, fleet and equipment, recreation and culture, and various other functions of the city. So that is the city as a whole, including all of our funds. Our largest fund and the source of the majority of our tax revenues is our general fund. Of this, our general government is funded primarily by property taxes, which consists of approximately 33% of our general fund revenues, income taxes, about 25% of our revenues, and return on equity, payment from the Board of Water in light of 17% of our general fund revenues. And lastly, revenues from the state at 15%, charges for services for activities that we provide directly to the citizens of the City of Lansing and nonresidents as well, and followed by other revenue sources, whether it's fines and forfeitures or interest revenues. Going into our general fund uses, we have retirement costs surpassing our public service, which mostly operates out of the various other funds of the city. The general fund functions of our public service department are comparatively smaller, followed by police, fire, general government, public services, community development, recreation culture, and so forth. Getting into the basis of our revenue projections, looking at our City of Lansing property tax revenues, describing the slide, you can see strong steady growth over the past 10 years, where we describe both the total 19.44 mils levied as part of the City of Lansing's operating budget. This includes the base operating levy of 15.44 mils, plus the extra four mils for police, fire, roads and parks, and sidewalk millages. Going into the assumptions behind this, these are based on the December 2024 valuation as performed by our assessing department. These have been adjusted for tax captures of our Tax Increment Finance Authority and Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authorities. It uses the same number of mils that we levied in the previous year, 19.44, and is an ad valorem taxable value estimate of $3.1 billion. Overall, this substantiates a 5.7% increase from the FY '25 budget. We're looking at pretty steady growth, although there might be some slight adjustments that come down from the March Board of Review or the Michigan Tax Tribunal. We feel fairly confident in these estimates not changing too much over the course of next year. Looking ahead, there's pressures in commercial and residential properties, and whether or not it's remote work, making office space less enviable, residential trends of supply and demand, and caution in the uncertain economic environment. But for the year ahead, we can at least rest assured that this is going to be a fairly stable source of revenue. Following that is our income tax revenues, which you can see the general increase over the past decade, and some of the variation in that growth as well. Taking a look at that, you can see our income tax returns graph of that split by residents versus nonresidents. Residents pay the full percent of their income tax unless they work within another income tax jurisdiction, in which case they pay half a percent each. Nonresidents who work within the City of Lansing pay a half a percent of their income for the duration that they work in the City of Lansing. And then if you're a nonresident working remotely, the portion of time working remote can be deducted from that half a percent, which has been one of the pressures on our income taxes from the COVID-19 pandemic, in which case we are always happy to hear when a business moves their employee base back within the city to work with us. But overall, when we're looking at income tax revenues, the state is estimating about 3% as of their January consensus revenue estimating conference. When we're looking at receipts from the city treasury department, we're seeing about a 4.1% increase calendar year 2023 to 2024, which overall our estimates are about a 2.9% increase from our FY '25 budget, and is about $43.99 million. As said, this is particularly sensitive to economic factors in terms of various financial risks that could come in the year ahead. At the same time, we're also seeing a lot of good, high-paying jobs coming to the City of Lansing in various developments, whether it's our battery plant or other economic development. And so we're seeing some potential optimism there. Yep. And then finally, I'll give a message to remember to pay your taxes, as that funds most of the people sitting here today. And I'll admit that my responsibilities here, I fulfilled those yesterday, so if you're still behind, there's time. Moving on, we have City of Lansing revenue sharing, going into the category of revenues that we receive from the state of Michigan. Revenue sharing comes in two components. There is a constitutional component, which is a formula based on percentage of sales tax across the state. And so this is a component of our state revenues that the state is obligated to give us. And then there is a statutory component, also known as the CBTRS, City Village Township Revenue Sharing, which is where the state decides how much extra they would like to give the local governments across the state, and also unfortunately, where the state goes occasionally when they need to balance their budget. And so as you look at this slide, you can see where revenue sharing was at a peak of $20.5 million in 2002, and then went down to $12.7 million in 2012, and has since recovered up to $19.1 million in our proposed budget. As you go into the cumulative effect of all of those cuts across the years between 2002 and 2026, on the following slide, you can see losses year over year compared to 2002 levels, peaking at about $9.6 million. This loss has decreased to $7.2 million, but you take that over the course of more than two decades, that's $180 million of lost revenue from the state that has been funding that the City of Lansing has had to do without. So imagine $180 million more of resources, but at the same time, sometimes challenges are the recipe for innovation. And so the City of Lansing is still here, and we plan to be here a very long time. Going into that, behind the estimates of these revenue assumptions, we have the governor's budget proposal and Senate Fiscal Agency estimates based off of that proposal that projects about constitutional revenue sharing increasing about 2%, statutory revenues increasing 4%. This balances out with to about 2.8% between the two sources. We also get distributions from public safety reimbursements, kind of capturing some of the state property values as it relates to our fire department in particular. We get distributions from medical marijuana facilities. Overall, when it comes to these facilities, we've seen that growth in previous years is based on a steady per facility amount across the state. And as the growth in facilities has been decreasing and reaching a market saturation, we don't anticipate intensive growth from that revenue source into the future, but so far fairly steady. Notably, again, for this year, the state is proposing again to fulfill its concept of a public safety revenue sharing fund. This is something that we included in our previous year's budget proposal, and this year, we're even more confident that it will materialize. But similar to the way that this didn't end up coming about this past fiscal year due to legislative challenges, that is something that if it doesn't come to pass, we will simply remove it from our budget. We will not implement those initiatives. But if that does come to pass, which we... There are two bills, a Democratic and a Republican version, to my understanding, that will provide the City of Lansing with $2.4 million to specifically address violent crime throughout the City of Lansing. There is also a lot of movement at the state side, as they consider many challenging problems that have plagued the state of Michigan in proposed road reforms. And so overall, within the budget here, we propose some pretty substantial investments in our road funding. All of these investments are proposed prior to any consideration of additional revenues we might receive from the state of Michigan. And so if they pass that funding, there'll be additional revenues and improve the financial outlook of our two road funds. But if it doesn't pass, we still intend to fulfill all of the road projects that are included in our capital projects. One area to look at here would be the state of Michigan will have one more consensus revenue estimating conference in May, and so right as you're adopting the budget, you can take a final look there if there's going to be any additional revenues projected or legislative movement, although to be determined.
Jake, I'm going to pause for just a second. Does anybody have any questions so far? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anyone.
Thank you very much. Going into the assumptions underlying our expenditures, so we have our employees and salaries, and with having an employee base and a labor base, we also have fringe benefits. And so these costs are less directly controlled by the City of Lansing, but there are still obligations that we have to pay. And so looking at our proposed budget, we have our healthcare for our active employees, FICA and Medicare for the long-term benefits down the road, dental and vision coverage, life and disability, defined contribution, healthcare savings. Overall, there's potential areas throughout this of various impacts, whether it's bidding out negotiating services, as we do from time to time, to make sure that we're getting the best value, lowest administrative costs, periodic plan audits to make sure that we're not paying for services that are no longer required or no longer needed through collective bargaining, either consolidating the number of plans we have to reduce the administrative burden, or negotiating benefits itself. And as you can assume, as the more potential for cost savings, the more impact it potentially may have on Lansing's employee base. And so through the collective bargaining process, this is something we consider, and particularly, we take what we hear from this body and from the mayor and incorporate those priorities, as well as we balance our need to have a very strong labor force throughout the city, be able to hire competitively, but also maintain our costs in long term. Similarly, on the retirement side of our fringe benefits, we have our defined benefit, pension and healthcare contributions. For pensions, we are contributing about $36.6 million as part of this budget proposal for retiree healthcare, $22.75 million. Other benefits, just the second paid time off buyouts as employees leave city employment and they get paid off for those balances, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance. Overall, we're moving to a model of paying the actuarially determined employer contribution for our retirement costs. And so this term particularly means that as we incur retirement obligations year over year for employees, we pay that additional cost in for each employee. So for each year that a person is here, maybe there's $10,000 in additional costs, we pay that $10,000 right up front, which is estimated by our actuaries. But also, there is a portion of our unfunded liabilities of costs that either haven't been funded in previous years, or by investments have... Returns have accrued more than we anticipated. There is a portion that we pay to pay down that unfunded liability over a course of many years. And so between those two amounts, the normal cost of the additional expense...
Councilman Spatafor?
Thanks, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions for Jake, but specifically about this right now. You're talking about the retirement investments. It's been an interesting week in the markets. How is that affecting our short-term look? I mean, that's this year's budget, so I know there's a long-term arc on all of this, but will that have any impact on the stability of the retirement funds?
Possibly. Very likely in some way. There's several aspects that this could potentially affect... There's several aspects that this could potentially affect our retirement costs. So there's the scenario in which case market conditions deteriorate. We experienced losses over the course of this entire fiscal year as we come to reevaluate our pension benefits. We determined that compared to a estimated rate of return of 7%, we received a rate of return that was less than that 7% or even a decline, and that could substantially impact our retirement. Now, we take those returns and we smooth them over the course of several years, which helps reduce the impact of year-over-year variation by taking that amount and spreading it. That way, we don't have significant changes to the amount we have to contribute into our systems. However, that does have an impact, either positive or negative. And certainly for 401Ks, we hope that this is a transitory moment, but we're keeping our eyes open and peeled for whatever's ahead of us.
Is 7% our AROR, our assumed rate of return?
I think that's the state's standard.
Mr. President, you mind if I go back just a minute? Jake, I meant to ask you this when the president asked for questions, but state revenue assumptions?
Yes.
I don't have slide numbers, but your outlook highlights a couple of things, stagnation in sales tax and impacted tariffs being one of them. I noticed about a $480,000 increase in state appropriations excluding the million-dollar assumption in capital city allocation. How much of those numbers are sort of assumptions based on what we learned in the January Revenue Conference? Like is that, can you answer that question? Is that clear enough?
Yep. So the January Revenue Conference primarily relates, gives us numbers for the revenue sharing dollars as far as the other components of revenue sharing. Those are more based on historical trends and analysis.
Okay. So if, what mechanism, and maybe you can't answer this question, but it's my assumption that the Revenue Conference will take place either right before or right after we adopt the budget. What mechanism does the administration have to kind of go back and revise that if things go south that day?
If things go south that day, we would propose a recommended changes. Within our budget proposal, we do include about $250,000 that we've set aside in contingency. That could be a potential area to absorb some cost of state revenue changes. We could suggest areas within departmental budgets. Of course, I try and do the best job I can to reduce blow within the City of Lansing's budget in making the recommendations. So there might be difficult decisions to make. We would probably propose our recommendations, but at this time, it would be, the resolution is within the hands of this body. And so we could make a substitute request, but it would be this body's decision to, I believe, accept it or propose their own modifications, if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay. Thanks, Jake, very much. Not that I don't trust your assumptions, I just, a lot of things have changed since January, so thank you.
Yes.
All right, Jake.
Yes. Yep, so I think that gets us, so out of the exciting world of retirement benefits, to our fee changes. And so along with our budget resolution each year, we propose a series of changes to fees across the City of Lansing. These are costs that are approved by the city council here. And you can also, I believe you have questions for individual city departments to go into the detail of these, but within our city clerk department, we have various costs of licenses, mostly inflationary costs and not necessarily year-over-year, but the inflationary cost of multiple years of not updating these individual costs each year that we propose a budget. Within our economic development and planning department, we have a series of parking fees for Lansing Center, our Capitol ramps, various events. And then as far as new fees go, related to electric vehicle violations, which would be related to some of the ordinances also being considered by this board, but differ from ordinary parking violations in which if we're charging fees for the use of electric vehicle charger, there's additional revenue loss if you're going and using a parking space for an EV as opposed to just simply taking up a regular parking space and stiffing us on the cost of that. And so overall, that's included. And then the economic development department can speak to that. We also had some building safety fees that came up late in the process. And so we'll propose some substitute language that you can insert into the budget resolution or we can include a outright substitute for your consideration, but that will have some mostly inflationary.
Just one second. I got Councilman Hussein.
So when you say late in the process, we actually just got, we got an email today from Mr. Mark Lawrence, right? And so with regard to the recommended executive budget, didn't have those, those changes in terms of some building safety fees. This very, something very similar happened last year as well.
Yes.
What's going on? How does that happen?
So I'll give a little bit of a mea culpa there, but I think there was some confusion as to whether or not these changes required ordinance changes. And so there was a miscommunication between economic development and planning and as we compiled the final decisions for the budget document. And so we assumed that this was something that would have to occur separately when in case it could go ahead without ordinance changes. And so we'll include that, we'll send you a copy of that. Or if you'd prefer addressing it separately, we can introduce a separate resolution to.
Out of curiosity, Jake, what ordinances were possibly affected by fee changes?
That's outside of my immediate knowledge. I just had a note within our form that it could be impacted by or would require an ordinance change. And we just, we took that for granted, didn't dig too much deeper.
Okay. Mark?
My understanding is I think they thought the fees themselves needed a standalone ordinance and not baked into the fee changes as part of the budget. So it wasn't a separate ordinance per se.
Gotcha. And we've always done it this way, haven't we?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Beyond that, we have a lot of familiar fee changes and adjustments from our Parks and Recreation Department, whether it's per diem rates for our parks, showmobile rental, sports fees, community programs, other park programs, rentals for various athletic fields. Most of these are inflationary, fine tuning, just adjusting towards projected costs of operating these programs. And then lastly, with our Public Service Department, we have fees for our garbage, rubbish and recycling programs.
Jake, I got a question on the garbage and rubbish and the recycling yard waste. When we're looking at the recycling and yard waste, there's always a lot of conversation about these, the fee. And I see that there is an increase this year. So could you maybe explain a little bit about how you guys decide to increase that fee every year?
I will let the department speak as to the specifics of the metrics they use, but overall, it is representing the cost of doing business. I do know that the trash and recycling funds, although when measured in a comparative format to our governmental funds, shows a positive fund balance. If you use the full accrual accounting method where you take in the net pension, OPEV liabilities, long-term debt obligations and capitalization, they show a net position deficit. Overall, this is not something that we have to submit a deficit elimination plan for, but is something that are costs that we should cover. But our Public Service Department is also cognizant of the costs it takes on departments or on the public and does not want to raise rates too fast that this becomes a burden on the public.
Do you happen, do you happen to know what the net negative balance is once you factor in all those things?
I believe if you go into the fund summaries of the budget book, I do make an accounting of that. And so.
I might have missed it.
Yep, it should be, so. Yep, so this goes into with our fund balances, we describe ending working capital as sort of the enterprise fund equivalent of the governmental fund fund balances. And so with our, with our trash collection fund, our garbage and rubbish collection fund, we have working capital of about 2.9 million to the positive. You pull out, you add in deferred outflows, which are the payments due for expenditures that have not yet gone out. And then you take in, subtract the non-current liabilities, just the liabilities that are due over a period greater than one year, which is more or less the outstanding retirement obligations, outstanding debt service obligations and payables over one year due. And that gets us to the actual net position of a negative 1.1 million. But at the same time, 1.9 million positive in terms of dollars we have on hand to make day-to-day expenses.
Thank you, Jake.
Moving on into the investments part of our budget proposal, we have operational investments in our public safety of the city. This is, as described previously, in our public safety revenue sharing dollars. So we would propose to reorganize our sergeants who currently work in supervising detention. We would bring them out into an active patrol role. This would involve creating civilian positions within detention to backfill that supervisory capacity. So this is an additional cost to the city, but would be taking those sergeants into a very active crime enforcement role and also adding in two police officers, a crime analyst, and as proposed last year in the budget development process, an office of neighborhood safety. Within the general fund, we continue to fund the advanced peace program at $300,000 for the upcoming fiscal year. And then with our fire department, we have the addition of a additional firefighter. For city development, we have a $75,000 increase to the city's facade improvement grant program for a total of $250,000. That is in addition to the $300,000 as part of the regular contract with the Economic Development Corporation for the services that they provide to the City of Lansing. In other infrastructure highlights, we have over $17.5 million in roads, streets and bridge improvement projects. This includes $10 million in local street improvements as requested by city council in their annual budget priorities, 4.4 million in major street improvements and 2.9 million in bridge repairs. In addition, we have over 2.0 million in improvements to the city's parks and recreation system, capital projects, including 75,000 to study the feasibility of a new community center as part of council's requests. We have 490,000 for maintenance and construction costs within our parking system, $1 million for another budget priority and new sidewalks, sidewalk repairs and sidewalk gap closures. We've included 50,000 for mobile speed bumps for our neighborhood streets and then 235,000 for replacement of fire and police department computers and computers from other departments. Overall, as you look at the infrastructure highlights, you can go to the back pages of the budget book where you can see both narrative summary of the various capital projects that are being proposed, as well as a funding chart that shows the specific distribution and source of funds of these capital projects. Further, we have investments in our downtown entertainment facilities.
Councilman Hussein?
Oh, yes.
Can we go back just for a second? So under infrastructure highlights, you, if we're looking at the fourth bullet point, you, sorry, talked about 1 million for new sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk gap closures. You left out end trailways. So the, the million dollars that, you know, we're being asked to appropriate, is that, are we, I mean, is it just sidewalks? Are we looking at, here's where we're at, this is the reality, right? So we, when I first got on the council, we were funding sidewalks at about 200,000. This council, for the, you know, the past, at least the 10 years I've been here, believe it or not, we, we've always included additional investments into, into our budget priorities. And the reason is, we know, we've been told over and over and over again by our public service director, that we need about 2.5 million dollars a year right now. And that would essentially get our sidewalk replacement cycle up to, I think it would be a 60-year sidewalk replacement cycle, which is totally not, I mean, obviously that's not best practice. Best practice would be 25 to 30 years. But just to get to that 60-year replacement cycle, we have to get to 2.5 million dollars. So I guess my question is, are we taking dollars from the 1 million and actually using it on as an example of trail system? And what are we, what are you guys internally, and I get, I get the, you know, our limitations with regard to our budget, I certainly understand that. But I'm going to have some questions, obviously, later about CSO and the work that you're doing to make sure that we're being as efficient as we possibly can. But that being said, is it, is it just sidewalks? And what internal conversations you are all having in terms of administration? Because we can't just keep saying, well, we need 2.5 and so we can't do this. You know, I was actually out in the Pleasant View neighborhood over the weekend doing potholes and sidewalk issues and kicking those over to public services. And every time I kick something over, it's like, ah, we don't have the money. So if you could answer those two questions, thank you.
Yep. And so I think the public service director can answer a little better than I can, but I can at least offer a few insights. And so as we describe it, yes, this is not 1 million for sidewalks outright, but for the combination of sources, whether it's new sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, gap closures and trailways, the distribution of which I believe is included in the FY '26 Capital Improvement Program Requests and Fund Sources page. So we have, under the third category sidewalks and roads, we have sidewalk repair for general fund maintenance. This is directly from the operating funds of the general fund of $100,000. We have sidewalk repair from city millage, that is about 300,000. We have about 500,000 from street funds. And then we have gap closures for 100,000. And so between these various revenue sources, we assemble as much funding as we can to get to that million dollar amount. An additional area that we benefit from is, although we aren't getting to that 2.5 million that is in fact needed for a proper replacement cycle, we can stretch some of the funding that we have by splitting the costs of sidewalk repair 50/50 with residents, which allows us to get our dollars a little farther than what we can get on our own. And there's some special assessment language potentially that this body could look at, whether we go through the process of formally special, applying a special assessment of 50% or if this body ever decides to change that ordinance and we could potentially assess a larger portion of sidewalk revenues, although that comes at additional tax burden to citizens of the City of Lansing. And so I understand the financial pressures of that decision. Are there any other aspects you'd like me to?
Yeah, I got Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jake. Just want to take you back to the operational investments for public safety. You mentioned that the jail sergeants are moving to active patrol, five of those people. You mentioned that the jail sergeants are moving to active patrol, five of those people. So that should hypothetically fill maybe five vacancies, right, to the patrol? I don't know.
Yeah, so this would be, so these five sergeants are currently working in a supervisory role within the detention. And so this is taking those five sergeants and putting them into the patrol route. And so there's more sergeants for those activities, which will reduce potentially overtime costs, have better efficiencies. Within the detention, there's still the need for supervision, but that would transition into a civilian role.
Thanks, Jake. I didn't mean to cut you off, but I heard that part. Because my next part is, so are we adding two additional patrol officers even though in the last, and we, I always talk about at least, the last decade, we haven't been able to close the gap of vacant patrol positions? So are we adding two additional police officers? I guess, what's the assurance that we're going to get within those two needed to justify adding them again to add to the vacancies when we haven't been able to close that gap?
Yep. Not knowing the specific status of where we stand now, I know our hiring department has made some significant strides towards that, but this would be two additional funded positions now. And you're very keenly aware of the fact that funding a position does not make it appear out of thin air and so that, but it does make it slightly easier where, if we're behind by six positions and we have 200 funded positions, and a year from now, we have 202, and we're still down by seven, we're ahead of where we were. And so we'll try and get as close to that 100% funded and filled. But at this time, we're working with what we got.
Sure. And I appreciate that. It's just that every year, we've pretty much done this, and it's almost like the point of putting them in here is more for the optics almost, because we aren't really addressing any ways to actually fill those positions, the ones that's already vacant, let alone these two new ones that's requested be added. So I guess I, it's going to be hard for me to support that, just knowing that it's just going to be added to the multiple current vacancies without a plan to, to fulfill them. So I'll be listening further for more of that.
Thank you for your comments.
And then Jake, I've, I've got just one quick question. The active employee healthcare, 11.9 million in the proposed budget, does that factor in that PHP has now been wiped out? And we're, I think we're still actively looking for a different HMO provider? Or we have one?
I believe we have them selected, and we're going through the open enrollment process fairly soon. I'm not sure to what extent we might have made that public yet. But we did factor in, assuming that employees stay, stay within the same type of plan, we got an estimate, estimate of what those costs are per plan and applied that into our personnel projections.
Okay, so we do have a, that was kind of more of the question was, because I know that with state HMOs, we've got wildly different amounts for costs. So appreciate the answer on that.
No, no, and it's, I have to credit the human resources department, the collaboration between them and our labor negotiator and, and with Ming Guan Vance and getting an RFP together in short time to bid that out and get some pretty good cost savings as much as we could. Yeah, so then going further along, so our downtown facilities, we have about 500,000 in revenue generating investments to the stadium, Lansing Center golf course through a new management contract with ASM Global. We have about 100,000 that the city is contributing towards lighting upgrades to improve safety and visibility for the parking lot underneath the Lansing Center. And then we have 50,000 improvements going towards the Jackson Field Stadium pursuant to our contract for the stadium. For investments in other city facilities and equipment, we have about 4.2 million as part of the city fleet vehicle replacement cycle. This was increased from about 2 million several years ago, and we've maintained this amount at approximately this amount for the past few years. And that's been pretty substantial in getting our fleet up to speed for what it needs to be, in addition to the federal funds that we received over the COVID-19 pandemic. We also have about 283,000 for the fleet building roof and 300,000 for other facility needs. Within our public service department on the personnel side, we also have the addition of a wastewater treatment plant operator and an engineering technician.
Jake, on the, that first one, 500,000 revenue generating investments, it says new contract with ASM. Has that been signed?
Not yet. So we're in active discussions, supporting the LFA board and as they determine the final terms and of that agreement, just making sure that all the lines are crossed, eyes are dotted, and that it provides the projected savings that it promises.
Would that 500,000 be in jeopardy if it was not signed?
Yes.
Okay.
So I was actually going to ask the same question, but in, in terms of Lansing Center in general, so I know it was announced back in 2023, we received 5 million dollars from the state in appropriations to do a number of things there. And then obviously, we have some dollars that we're looking at with regard to this budget to do some things. As, as an example, the 100,000 that you have listed here for lighting for the underground ramp. What about, is it, has there been any discussion about some treatment, some, some lighting treatment for the front of the Lansing Center? For me, and I hear about it all the time, experience it when I'm downtown, but that stretch is, is unacceptable. You know, when you talk about, you know, kind of the state's corridor, and you, you think about safety, and you think about vibrancy, and you, the Lansing Center at night, I mean, it's, it's an entire darkened block, essentially. So do you, do you know the conversations are there? And is there anything in this budget that, that contemplates, you know, some lighting package there?
Yeah, as we assisted LFA through the RFP process, many of the responses that we got, one of the factors that was considered under the bid was what areas they saw for improvement and what would be their capital priorities. And so a number of the responses that we got discussed lighting and improvements, signage, just kind of creating a more visually appearing atmosphere and safe atmosphere. But those are also processes still in discussion, and these are buildings that will probably require significant financial investment and financing over the years ahead. And so overall, we're hoping to reduce the operating costs that we can divert more of that funding towards the improvement of the buildings itself.
All right, thank you.
I was also asked, thank you, Councilmember Hussein, on strategies and efficiencies that the city of Lansing is pursuing across departments and in my particular role of chief strategy officer. And so overall, one of the main priorities of this position and in my role has been stabilizing and restoring city finances. This has been, part of this has been rebuilding and maintaining a 12% to 15% target fund balance. The general fund is a percentage of expenditures. Notably, times were looking pretty rough during the early stages of the COVID-19 pandemic. We utilized funding from federal sources, other opportunities, while also taking opportunities to reinvest savings in various ways in order to get a better return on our resources. And so overall, preceding me, so I can't particularly take credit for this, this position has reduced unfunded healthcare liabilities by 400 million dollars. This year, we got an estimate of what that impact has been on an annual cumulative basis, and so that has saved the city 70 million dollars in cumulative expenditures out the door beyond this estimate of long-term liabilities. We have also secured about 13.8 million dollars across two state and Michigan grants for the retirement systems, which has produced another 500,000 in annual savings for our actuarially determined contribution requirements. And then describing what I talked about a little previously in response to your question, recently partnered with Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority, the Choose Lansing Convention Bureau, as well as Lansing Lugnuts to coordinate on a request for proposals for management services to the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority. We received a number of bids and made a recommendation for their board to consider a proposal that protects about 2 million in savings across five years for their operations. These are fundings that could provide direct savings to the city of Lansing's budget or be reinvested into capital expenditures in previous years, or in future years. On the side of promoting development, increasing revenues, identifying efficiencies, this has been supporting, funding and promotion of projects that have been supportive of city goals in terms of housing, employment, and public safety needs throughout the city, sort of coordinating on the public safety building projects. There's the New Vision Lansing and other housing projects throughout the city that will bring in new populations, provide jobs and resources, and taxable value increase down the line. There's been identifying and supporting departments and applying for and managing grant funding. And so where we do not necessarily have the resources to pursue some investments ourselves, we've been able to find outside places that could support that role, whether it's through the state, federal government, or private sources, meeting with departments to identify goals and evaluate proposed operational changes. And so various departments will come with, up with an idea and say, hey, I'm interested in doing this, but I don't know what I need to do or what steps I need to go to get there. And so I can provide the financial and technical assistance to make that a reality, do cost estimates, and make a recommendation as to how to proceed. There's other technical assistance for special projects and inquiries. I recall as we were navigating one of the intermediary upgrades of the One Solution software, Two BSNA, the intermediate stage was Finance Enterprise, in which case we needed to, we upgraded all of our reports, but suddenly they couldn't export into Excel. So I provided assistance to the department and recoding those reports and to make them Excel export capable, which was an interesting process. But lastly, another area of note would be negotiations throughout the city. And so part of this has been developing long-term financial forecasts and contingency plans for potential risks and opportunities across the city of Lansing. Budget development and preparation as it goes with working with individual departments and evaluating operating plans, collective bargaining agreements with the city's labor unions, balancing competing needs of financial resources and a need for a strong labor force. And then various revenue agreements and partnership agreements with other city of Lansing groups, providing significant savings to the city of Lansing. As we wrap this up, I also include a, the city of Lansing mission as adopted by the city council as part of this budget presentation. And so notably, through all of the changes that happen year over year, the city of Lansing's mission remains the, substantially the same. And so the city of Lansing, in adopting its annual statement of budget policies and priorities, establishes the following mission for the city of Lansing: Promoting a vibrant, safe, healthy, and inclusive community that provides opportunity for personal and economic growth for residents, businesses, and visitors; securing short and long-term financial stability through prudent management of city resources; providing reliable, efficient, and quality services that are responsive to the needs of residents and businesses; adopting sustainable practices that protect and enhance our cultural, natural, and historic resources; and facilitating regional collaboration and connecting communities. And then I'll, if you have any questions, I'm available. And then the following slides will be related to the following agenda item.
Do we have any questions on this? Councilman Hussein.
And, and this is for, this could be for Mark, this could be for you. I do have a document in front of me. As you know, in the, the budget section of the charter, it doesn't just discuss priorities, it discusses policy. So we also pass a policies document. And in the 2425 policies document, I know you probably don't have it in front of you, so let me read it. A few of the things that we had actually passed as part of that are as follows. Contracts said that by the first council meeting of October, January, April, July, the administration is requested to present to council a list of all contracts and copies of all purchase orders, including any extension and/or amendments approved by the administration over 25,000. The administration is requested to include non-appropriation clauses and other similar out provisions in all leases and vendor contract. I, I understand we, you know, use the word requested. Did we ever receive anything in line with that? Was anything ever put, I don't, I don't recall. Is there ever any attempt to?
I don't either.
Put that together and send, what's that?
I don't either. I'd have to look.
Okay. So I'm going to, not just contracts, right? So as you do some of that research, also please look at the City Roads Maintenance Construction Capital Improvement Plan. We had asked for an update on an annual basis by December 1st each year, as well as capital improvement projects, asked for, I'm sorry, City Road Maintenance Construction Capital Improvement Plan, that was December 1st, residential solid waste, September 1st, 2024, Moing of Parks and Cemetery, September 1st, 2024, capital city allocation, September 1st, 2024. And then.
Some of those you have seen.
Councilman Spatafor.
Councilman Spatafor.
I don't have the answer to your question. I just know that in our audit committee today, the internal auditor brought that up as a question, and we asked him to please look into that, figure out where all those are and then report back to leadership and the committee.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. I know you received mowing. We've talked about mowing, I want to say, last year at this time. There was another one in there. We'll, we'll take a look.
Sounds like Charles is on it. In partnership.
You, of course. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, so then we're going to move on to item C, if there's other questions, which is the budget impact overview on projects, public safety complex, ovation, new city hall. And Jake is going to hang around for this presentation, too.
Yep. And so overall, this is just a, we prepared a very brief update as to the funding sources of these various projects as a brief update and a description of how they relate to the overall city budget. And so overall, as you're looking at our budget book, these are items that are treated somewhat separate, being major capital projects that are not necessarily adopted on an annual basis. With our public safety complex, this is overall about a 175 million dollar project. This has been funded, the construction portion of this, through unlimited tax general obligation bonds, of which voters improved a 3.9 millage for the debt service on November 7th, 2022. This funding, which will be of tremendous use to the public safety departments throughout the city, whether it's our police department, our 54A District Court, as well as our fire department, will be used to support a combined public safety building, several fire stations, Fire Station 2 and 9, as well as a fire station training building. We include some of the perspective visuals of what those are currently projected to look like. Those are proceeding on pace, but as we said, is funded through that under 75 million dollar bond, which will be repaid over time through that 3.9 mills of debt service millage. Then going, moving on to our city hall, this is a 40 million dollar project, which Then going, moving on to our city hall, this is a $40 million project, which the funding source of this comes from a grant from the state of Michigan, which was accepted and approved by this body. And so overall, we have the project costs outlined between designing, construction being the vast majority of the project, but also for furnishing, development and contingency items, including the owner's representative costs. We have some of the last bids for this project coming in. Oh, continue.
Just, is Boji the owner's representative for the 2 million on there?
I think so, yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Yep. Yep. And so I think there's several of the final bid packages will be coming back soon or have come back, which will be related to aspects of the concrete flatwork, foundations of the buildings, special foundations, masonry, steel, earthwork and utilities. And so overall, within these three facilities, there's been a lot of, a fairly extensive process as it relates to the design, construction documents, planning approvals, but we're excited to get these into the ground and building up fairly quickly.
Jake, real quick for you. Just looking at this again on that new city hall, is the development and the owner's representative the same person or are those two different?
I can get that information.
Mark, do you happen to know?
No, it's on my head.
Okay. If we could find out, I would be curious, because it's, I think, 3.8 million in total.
Yep. We can definitely track that down for you. Yep. And then lastly, we have the Ovation Center for our downtown Lansing. This will be a center for performance and arts. Overall, the funding source from this is more complicated than the two previous items in that we got it from a variety of sources. And so $20 million of the funding has come from a bond of the City of Lansing for that 20 million total. We have state grants totaling $7 million, a federal grant from HUD of 750,000, private grants and fundraising of 2.6 million, and then our public education governance fees of 2.6 million for the total project budget of 32.9 million. And so overall, the final construction documents for this building are being finalized and submitted for plan review, both for the new construction 500 building as well as the renovation of the 520 building. And then I also included a note that you can get updates for and support the ovation at ovationlansing.com.
Then I have Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jake, a couple of questions for you. You gave me enough information to ask questions about it. So who are the owner's reps on the other construction projects, so the ovation and the city hall are in the public safety complex and fire station improvements?
My mind is foggy, so I'd have to get that to you separately, but I can send you the information.
Okay. Is that Kramer?
They're a familiar name to me.
Okay. Then the other question, I will dovetail off of Council President Cost's question. Development is hot, $1.8 million. Contingency and owner's rep is two, that's almost 10% of the project. And appreciate a breakdown of what that $2 million is for, if, you know, 1.9 of it is contingency, because there's a gas station there 50 years ago we didn't know about. That's a different thing than just another $2.0 million for the same entity.
And for the purposes of a beautiful PowerPoint, I summarize it as at a high level, but we have some fairly detailed budget breakdowns that we can provide.
Thanks.
And then, Mark?
Thank you. Kramer Management is the owner's rep for city hall.
Okay. And then I, Councilman Spatafor, I think the remediation for that site was done when we tore down Borsad and put a parking lot on it.
That's not entirely my understanding, but I'm not going to.
Maybe I could be wrong, too.
I could also be wrong. So that helps answer my question about city hall.
River Caddis for public safety.
That's right. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions? I think that was the end of your presentation. So I want to thank both of you for being here. We are going to move on to item D.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The CDBG budget presentation, it's going to be for a resolution setting a public hearing for the community development block grant annual action plan for fiscal year 2526. And it looks like we have Doris and Raleigh here to present on this. And Aaron. Aaron?
Yep.
If you could make sure your green light is on, and I will hand the floor over when you are ready.
While they're taking their seats, I'll at least do some slight introductions and pass the microphone over, but excited to be here again before you. For those who've gone through this a couple of times, this is an annual requirement, but I just wanted to introduce, you're familiar with Doris Witherspoon, who's been with the department nearly 30 years, if not the longest employee of the economic development and planning team right now. But sitting adjacent from her is a, also longtime City of Lansing employee, but now a friend and a team member of mine in EDP, and that's Erin Butendorf. And so she is the manager of our community development division. You're familiar with Barbara Kimmel, who retired this past July. And so Erin joined the team, came over from public service back in October. So I will pass the mic over to Doris.
CDTV, can you put up the presentation for us? Thank you.
Is the presentation up? Wonderful. All right. Good evening, Council President Cost and Vice President Councilmember Carter. My name is Erin Butendorf, and I know I'm introducing myself to some of you this evening. I'm a proud resident of the Sycamore Park neighborhood. I started with the city about seven years ago in the Neighborhood Arts and Citizen Engagement Department, spent some time in the Public Service Department. And as Raleigh said, I've been with our lovely community development since October. I have six amazing team members that I work with, including Doris here, and I couldn't do it without her, but I would like to say the names of my other five, which are Kirk Luban and Manuel, or Manny Delgado, who are housing reconstruction specialists, Jamie Garver, who's our administrative specialist, Dirk Hampton, who's our development secretary, and Tyler Blakely, who's our community development coordinator. And with that, I'll be brief. We'll take it over to Doris.
Thank you, and good evening, council members. Yes, I've been here 31 years. I can't believe it. But yet, that time goes by fast. And I know many of you, and I know this a couple of new faces, so I'll try to be brief for the community development block grant presentation. But the City of Lansing, we are submitting our annual action plan for fiscal year 2025, which covers July 1st, 2025 through June 30 of 2026. And we operate on a, we create a five-year consolidated plan, and that is basically developed based on community needs and assist the city on how we're going to use our federal funds and from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Housing, public service, economic development and homelessness, those are some of the things that are included in the consolidated plan. With that consolidated plan, we submit an annual action plan every year, and that basically supports the goals, objectives and strategies of our five-year plan. And it also functions as our annual application to HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development. If we do not submit that plan, we are jeopardy of not getting funding. We receive the federal funds for community development block grant home dollars and our emergency solutions grant. So what is CDBG? The Community Development Block Grant Program provides funding for community revitalization purposes and may be used for activities that fulfill one of the three national objectives: benefit to persons of low and moderate income, elimination of slum and blight, and urgent community need. If they do not meet any of those requirements, then they cannot apply for Community Development Block Grant. Some of the activities that we use for community development block grant are housing, economic development, public services, public facilities, acquisition and demolition. And the home program, another funding source that we receive federal funds for is down payment assistance, new construction and housing rehab. And then also, we have the Emergency Solutions Grant Program that provides funding to assist homeless persons. And eligible activities include one of the six components or rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention, street outreach, emergency shelter. Our grant data-based information is HMIS or Homeless Management Information System and Administration. And as many of you already know, our department manages the community development block grant and home funds, and we give the ESG grants to our Human Relations and Community Services Department. I provided a funding history from, for over a 10-year period, and you can see how the funds for all of those programs have changed over time, up and down and so forth. So it has varied over the past 10 years. And also included is the CDBG eligible area map. And the next few slides just give you an idea of some of the projects that we have funded in the City of Lansing. Our economic development, our kids camp through public services. We've also in the past have had emergency housing repair programs. Let's see, what else? Rental rehab, public services activities. And just want to mention the last thing, that the annual action plan is basically a citizen-driven plan. We've already held two public hearings before our planning commission, one on December the 3rd and the other one was held on March the 4th. We are now in the comment period, so people can have an opportunity to comment on the draft action plan. The comment period started March 20th and will end on April the 21st. And we have a public hearing that will be set before city council on April the 21st. The information is on our city, on the city's website. And that concludes my brief presentation. If you have any questions, we will be glad to answer.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Really quickly, the rental rehabilitation money, that's new this year, right?
No.
No? And is it, it's for private landlords to fix up the residential building?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess I wonder, because usually if you have to fix up a residential building, it has some problems with it, right? It's a private landlord, problems with the building, possible problems that could lead to red tags. So I guess where do we distinguish between our red tag monitoring fee of, you know, $100 per month, when some of these people are pretty much trying to take the money they have, find contractors, fix up their rental properties so they can get the red tag, people living in them versus money that is provided from the city to help them?
I'll jump in here. First distinguishing moment, or factor, I would say, council members, the red tag monitoring fee covers the cost of delivery service for the code enforcement staff and administrative staff to conduct that monthly fee. So it's not dollars generated that go into a pot that could be then accessed further, if I'm understanding maybe where you're coming from in that effort. The difference then between what CDBG can offer for potential rental rehabs is it can be both renovations of existing buildings, it can also assist in certain qualified developers for newly construction, but the units assisted with these dollars then have to make a long-term affordability commitment. And so the dollars and the agencies that this have helped have been longstanding agencies or developers with that of long-term affordability commitment to then rent those units back out to somebody at or below the qualified income. I hope I'm answering, or if maybe you could offer me some further clarification on the red tag fee?
I think I can save it for later, but that kind of answers. I just wanted to distinguish between a program like FIS versus what we kind of have going on, which for some people might be fair, but I think for a lot of people, I think it's not. But that's a different conversation.
Sure. Kate, do we have any further comments? Councilmember Spatafor.
If memory serves, the numbers that we look at are pretty tentative, and then we, by May, we have a more solid idea, but Washington's going to send our way. Is that correct?
Yeah, because we, at this point in time, we don't know what our federal funding allocations are going to be. The action plan is due May 14th of each year, but we do have a deadline possible of August the 16th. That's our definite deadline. So, and we adjust the plan, you know, accordingly, so.
And you come back to us with the final numbers once, before you submit in the May deadline?
If we have the information by then, yes. If we don't, then we will come back with an amendment.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilman Hussein.
So the numbers listed then are the numbers that we received last year, correct?
That's correct. And that's how we've been doing it, year after year after year, until we get our actual allocations.
Kate, do we have any further questions? Seeing none, Vice President Carter?
Yes. So I would motion to set the public hearing for April 21st for the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for FY 2025, 2026.
Kate, we have a proper motion in place. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
You, too, and thank you for coming. Next, we are going to move on to item E, which is the department budget presentations. I believe we have the director, Jason, is here to present tonight, and it looks like Jake is coming back for another round. If you could make sure your green light is on when you're speaking, I will turn the floor
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Council, thank you. I was going to answer the questions that you had proposed in my presentation. I didn't know if you need anything else, but I'll get started there and then we'll go from there. As far as the difference in our budget for current fiscal year, many of the increases were due to software. A lot of the vendors now, especially now with all of the tariffs, the prices are going up pretty heavily. And our hardware maintenance is going up as far as our costs and the additional contractual There are also, we don't have any changes in IT. Our services are still the same. And your next question was about 3-1-1. For 3-1-1, we support 3-1-1. It's, we've heard many positive inefficiencies came by departments, but IT currently, we take our own calls that come in. So 3-1-1 is not doing for us at this time. Let's see. Let's see, as far as costs eliminated or contract position or budgets, um, there's no changes in the current budget. IT currently uses, uh, due point for infrastructure services and, um, uh, the client services manager and a senior project manager. We also have one person currently that's from TruKrit Parent Holdings that she, um, is assisting with our Windows 11 rollout, because of Windows 10 to Windows 11, that's what she is currently doing. Um, your next question was as far as, uh, how many employees left your department in the past year? Uh, no one's left the department, and we only have, uh, three, um, people that are retirement eligible. So as far as, uh, operational changes that we made for, um, efficiencies, uh, we've had a big problem with AT&amp;T, and we were able to, um, cut off and remove AT&amp;T out of our, uh, so we saved about $35,000 in doing so for FY 25. So we will no longer have them here at the city of Lansing. And then, um, as far as you asked the question about the budget, with the submitted budget, we can perform all the necessary responsibilities that we have here in IT. And, um, we did not get any federal grant funds. Then your last question, you asked about BSNA. So BSNA, um, when it was rolled out, it did impact IT. Um, we had different departments, uh, applications help desk, and, um, our PMO teams, uh, have, took on extra responsibilities due to this rollout. And that is it.
Does anyone have any questions? Internal auditor?
Is this on? Okay. Not so much a question, but just, uh, something I'd like to stress is if you can find it in your budget, uh, it's, um, I'm not saying we don't or do, I don't want to say it publicly, but, uh, I strongly recommend penetration testing of our systems, at least annually to, so if that's possible to put in your budget, I highly recommend it, and you don't have to respond, we don't need it on.
Okay, well, I will say publicly, it's, um, it's being done, so, um, we can talk further details, um, offline.
Okay, I believe I have Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you for being here. Relating to the, um, it looks like almost a 15% increase in the software you indicated because of tariffs. Is there, um, I mean, they just said we're going to increase, that's quite a significant jump. Is there any other opportunity we have, uh, to create competitiveness and look at some other type of software, or are we getting additional benefits and additional services?
So each, each product, we take a look at when it's renewal time and to see, okay, is there other competitors out there that can take this? Currently, um, most of our products, not all, but most of our products, we do, uh, one-year renewal unless a three-year renewal benefits us. It gives the city the position so we can pivot, and if we decide that we either want to go with a different piece of software because of, um, uh, need or, like to your point, uh, councilmember, uh, to save on price, um, because that's one thing that we constantly have to be looking at. Did I answer your question?
So I guess you're saying that that's been done, and this is the bottom line, the best that, that we're able to do is a 15% increase?
Um, yes, it's been done because it's done as part of a process, meaning everything that we look at, we are always looking at costs. Um, that's kind of the top priority, um, to save, uh, money for the citizens of the city of Lansing.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any other questions? Quickly, I have two things. One, um, do you feel you have enough staff? Um, when I call to get IT help, I've gotten the answering machine every time. Um, so do you have enough staff members to be able to assist this big of a, um, city employee population?
I would like to say that, you know, everyone always would like to have extra staff to work on, um, projects and everything else that's going on, but we still have the daily things that we have to cover. I would say that, you know, with our budget that we have, we can meet the needs of the employees of the city, but if, to improve, I guess, customer service, um, yeah, of course, um, an extra person would be helpful, but I don't necessarily want to raise taxes to, you know, as a result.
I've got Vice President Carter, followed by Councilman Hussein.
Um, thank you, President Cost. Uh, in one of your responses, you said no one has left the department when we asked how many employees have left your department the past year and how many were due for retirement. You have three that are eligible currently. Um, is there any proactive measures that you're taking so that once those three individuals, um, proceed with their retirement, we already have some individual employees on deck?
Yes.
So there's no gaps?
Something in the works right now for one, uh, specific individual. Um, and then I have another one coming up. Uh, so I've already sent it out, uh, working with HR to take a look at, uh, the position and make sure, so right now it's out, uh, with, uh, sorry, I'm... The position is being, being reviewed to make sure that from, uh, a salary perspective, that's where we're at. And then when it comes back from that company, I, I can't remember the company's name, so, um, but yes, we're proceeding forward with that. I actually have a position, um, to fill.
I have Councilman Hussein.
Yes, I'm just curious, in terms of, from the submission of your, um, requested budget to the mayor's office, and then obviously from that being conveyed, or I should say from the executive, uh, recommended budget being brought to us, um, is there anything that didn't make it through the process? In other words, were there any requests by your department that were not satisfied by, by the mayor's office?
I did have a request for a camera person, um, because, uh, right now we're just trying to, all of cameras that are going in the city for security, um, IT is helping out the best we can, but we put that, put that request in, that request, um, was not, I guess, possible due to all of, uh, uh, salary increases and everything that's happening right now.
Okay. Do we have any further questions? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Cost. Uh, related to Councilman Carter's, uh, question in the succession planning of the three individual retirees who are eligible, uh, you indicated you're in, um, position now to begin hiring. Uh, what do you see as far as the timeline to ensure that, um, you know, as council, president, Cost indicated sometimes it's a challenge with the, uh, maybe user experience or the timeframe. So related to that, um, if you have three that potentially are leaving, one position coming up, when do you, uh, see that being, um, able to actually be placed in a part of the team?
The first position?
Yes.
Okay, so for the first position, as long as we can keep moving it forward, I see that happening hopefully in the next month or so, um, maybe two months if, you know, as far as interviewing process and everything else. So I, I would see that happening relatively soon, as long as we can keep, uh, work with HR and make sure that we go through the process.
Thank you so much for that. And what about the other two positions?
The two positions, uh, the two individuals have not really given when they're going to retire, so it makes it hard for me to, I guess, forecast and, and have that, uh, ability to say, okay, I, I need to hire people and get ahead of it. So, uh, right now, I, I guess I can't answer that question because I, I don't know, uh, when they're going to retire.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Nothing further. We appreciate you coming down.
Okay.
And we will move on to assessing. I believe we have the city assessor here, Jennifer. And if you could just make sure the green light is on.
Good evening.
Good evening. You can start with your questions whenever you're ready.
Very good. Your first question was about the difference with our budget from the current fiscal year. Um, our largest difference in assessing is our salaries and our contractual positions. Uh, since I began about a year ago, I have actively worked to fill all of our full-time positions. I am proud to say that we are interviewing for our last two administrative positions, um, so hopefully we'll be fully staffed under regular employees very soon. Um, there are no changes in services to our department, and we are not purchasing any major equipment at all with this budget. 3-1-1 does not answer assessing calls, uh, mostly due to PA 660, which requires certification to answer assessing calls. 3-1-1 is a great program that really helps our citizens, and unfortunately, they can't be used in our department. Um, we are trying to get rid of all of our contractual positions at this time. After we hire this week, from our interviews, we will have one full-time appraiser position. We currently have a contractor in there who is taking classes and hopefully will be certified and eligible, um, but we have not had that as an open position, and we have not had any other qualified applicants for that. Uh, so hopefully in just within a couple of months, we'll be fully staffed with no issue, no contracts. Technically, we've had nobody leave our department in the last year. Prior to my taking over, the assessor retired and the deputy assessor retired. That would be, other than elimination of contract positions, that is all, uh, the positions that have left. Um, we are always looking to be more efficient in assessing. Um, one of the biggest issues or one of the biggest changes we've made is ensuring that we have enough staff to get all the work done. So training from within and promoting from within has been our way to help preserve the knowledge and, and the good, hard-working people and make sure the jobs are completed. Um, we are able to perform all of our necessary responsibilities with this budget, and there are no new initiatives or services needed with this budget. We also do not get grant funds. I don't think there's many grants to ask for more taxes, so they don't offer a lot for us. Um, BSNA has been in assessing, probably the originator of the BSNA into the city. It is a very powerful database, and I have been through multiple conversions, and this conversion was, didn't have any more heartburn than I've seen in past ones. So I anticipated what we saw. We are still working to learn the new processes and make sure that this new system is powerful and, and better for us in the future. And I think the most, um, in assessing, we get very little testing of how we're doing a good job, but the tax tribunals are one that I use as a litmus test for us. And, um, in 2024, we had 26 small claims appeals. That is significantly low for the size of a community. Um, we have settled 15 of those cases or heard them in court, and we have only lost about $150,365 in taxable value of those cases, or about $2,922 of general fund taxes. Very good savings, and we are responsible with these, uh, appeals. More significantly are the full tribunals. As you know, those are the larger, more complex properties that appeal. In 2024, we had 38 full tribunals. Um, at currently, because I had a lot of settlement this weekend, we have about five open cases at this time, and that represents about $1,362.41 of taxable dollars. General fund taxes is about $26,500. So we are really circling the wagons on that and keeping up with them and making sure that our budgets are appropriate and our money is there for you. Any other questions?
Does anyone have any additional questions? Internal auditor? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you for being here. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Thank you for all that hard work on a couple of things we've been working on this year. Uh, just a small question I noticed, and I, I know that the IT director spoke on it a little bit, but that there was additional, uh, information technology allocation for you is 20, about $20,000 uptick, which is about 25%. Is there any additional use, or is it kind of just related to their additional costs that they're kind of charging more, if you will?
I believe that is the service charge for the maintenance of the, the system and for the external online website. So that would be their fees.
Okay. Additionally, um, I spoke in the past to the previous assessor, and there was conversation, um, this is years ago, I just wanted to kind of follow up with this since we have you here today. Do you feel that the positions within your department are properly classified, and then as you look to continue to build the department, um, you know, to make sure that they're classified in a way that help you to recruit, uh, individuals, you know, that are qualified and that also can be trained as well?
So when I began a year ago, we had about four full-time employees in the department. Um, at this time, we are almost fully staffed, and after hiring the two admin, we will have nine of the 10 positions fully staffed under union positions. Part of the process of doing that was making sure that the job descriptions were appropriate and, and training was available. I will tell you right now, I have about five of my employees in classes to advance their training to be more efficient and more appropriate for the, for the community.
Excellent. Well, that's great to hear. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Any further questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you for being here tonight, Jennifer.
Thank you. You all have a great evening.
You too. Next, we have the city attorney. Mr. Greg Venker is going to step on down. Happy Gilmore.
Hello?
Hello, Greg. Do you want to go ahead and start on the questions when you're ready, sir?
Yes. Okay. Uh, what's the difference between my budget in the current fiscal year and the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year? Um, the, there is an increase. The increases are almost exclusively due to salary increases and reclassifications that have happened during the last year. Perhaps the most significant of these is I, after taking over as a city attorney, uh, last year around this time, um, I, there was a position on the books that was a weird vestigial old job that didn't even make sense anymore. It was classified at a number that also didn't fit with any of the assistant city attorneys. I classed that up. And so that is on the books now as a hirable position. Are there any programs that we have done in the past year that are not included in this budget? No. Uh, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in our budget? Fortunately, no. Um, if the attorney is buying major equipment, you should be asking me a lot of other questions. Uh, what impact has 3-1-1 taken on our department and staff? Um, we do not, uh, 3-1-1 does not answer calls for our department. Uh, I will say I have noticed a decrease overall in calls that get transferred. It used to be that, um, somebody would call another department or division, ask a question that was fairly technical, and that person that answered the phone would say, I don't know, you should talk to the lawyers. That would get transferred to our department, and then we would say, mm, probably want to talk to insert, uh, department that knows the answer to that question. We get a lot fewer of those transfer-type calls, um, but because we are the attorney to... get a lot fewer of those transfer-type calls, but because we are the attorney to the city, we still need to be the ones that are answering those calls when somebody's trying to call and reach the attorneys. So, they don't answer our calls, but I have noticed a general decrease in, I'll say, randomly redirected telephone calls.
Greg, quickly, just before, this is why this is fresh in my head. So, it looks like on the line item, $131,490 for City 3-1-1 services allocation. If I'm reading that correctly... Oh, no. You know what? That's my fault. Wrong section. Disregard.
Okay. I was about to be very concerned. Okay. 3-1-1. Any eliminated, combined, or contracted positions within the budget? If so, provide specifics. No. How many employees have left my department in the past year? I think, I was counting, I don't think. The answer is four, if we're talking within the last fiscal year. I had, let's see, one attorney left to become a city attorney in a different city. One attorney left to take a very high-paying job at the state. One attorney left and is doing something that is not municipal law. And then our paralegal just left to take a higher paid position at the Board of Water and Light. So, four departures. And how many were due to retirement? Zero. What, if any, operational changes have we made to become more efficient? I wouldn't say we've, it's hard to, if we have become more efficient, it wouldn't be in the ways that I could point to necessarily a savings in money. I think, as this council knows, I have tried to take on more stuff that we can do, try to be more proactive in terms of litigation. I know, you know, we are filing against bad landlords. We are filing in other courts to try to take the offense more, and there have been efficiencies that have allowed us to do that while still maintaining minimum necessary sort of requirements under the charter. I guess the one thing, we are working with the Board of Water and Light, their attorneys, to see if we can share costs related to legal research requirements. That's a fairly expensive thing, a fairly expensive subscription that we have, and I just, last week, two weeks ago, had a meeting with our sort of rep in that world to see if we can combine the two into one account and then share those costs across the two divisions. Are we able to perform all necessary legal or departmental responsibilities with the budget? Yes. Again, I've said I always want to do more, but when you look at the core functions of our department, what we must do for the city, I think we are able to do that with this budget. Are there any new initiatives or services that we will be providing in this budget? Not really, other than, as stated previously, some of the more offensive work on behalf of the city. We do not have any federal grant funds that we receive or that we have budgeted to receive. And what impact has BSNA had on our department? What issues have we run into? I'll answer the last one. My employees have not had issues with BSNA payroll, other than figuring out how to interact with a new website. And from my perspective, fortunately, the impact has been pretty limited. I actually like the interface when it comes to invoice approvals. I find it more simple to use. I don't love the time card function quite as much because I have to click through several screens to approve people's time at the end of every two weeks, but that's just my little complaint. So, those are my questions, and those are my answers. Happy to answer anything else.
Do we have any questions? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Cost, and of course, thank you for being here, city attorney. Thank you for being, it sounds like proactive relating to, you said, a position that wasn't really relevant, that you reclassified to, you know, make it effective where we could, you know, you could have that position available, as well as it sounds like competitive salary, if you will. What position is that?
Well, it's now just an assistant city attorney.
Okay.
It used to be called, I think, legal advisor.
Okay.
Which, and we can get into that if you want to have a real nerdy discussion another time, but it was classed in it. Yeah. I'll stop.
Thank you. Just wanted to have that for the record. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Internal auditor. Do you have any questions? Nothing? Does anyone have any other questions for the city attorney? Okay. Greg, I want to thank you for stepping on down there. If you want to come back on up?
Thank you.
We will move on to Neighborhood Arts and Citizen Engagement. Ms. Delisa Fountain, Fontaine, I'm sorry, is here. I promise I know your last name. If you could make sure the green light is on, and you can start your questions as soon as you are ready. And I want to remind folks that it is 6:55. We are still in committee of the whole. Council will be starting late. We still have several other items on this agenda tonight.
So, good evening. Thank you for having me. Gosh. I talk to you all on a regular basis, but I swear, I get under these lights, I get in front of you, and my heart starts pounding. So, excuse me if I talk a little fast. Okay, so going through my questions. What is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? One of the major differences is we've reallocated 20K from our operating funds to increase funding for our neighborhood grants and programs, which will include Neighborhoods in Bloom, an arts grant that we introduced in fiscal year '25. But other than that, as far as change, the percentage difference is minimal, as we are focusing simply on our current programming and not beginning anything new. Number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? And there are no changes in services for fiscal year '26. Are there any programs you have done in the past that you have not included in this budget? And no, there are not. Are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? This is not applicable to our department. Number five, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? And there are no major equipment purchases proposed in fiscal year budget for DNACE. Are there any eliminated, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? There are no eliminated, combining, or contracting of positions in this budget. Number seven, how many employees have left your department in the past year, and how many were due to retirement? One employee has left our department for a position with the State of Michigan. HR worked very hard to fill that position quickly, and other than that, that's the only person who has left. What, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what were the savings? While I don't have the exact monetary savings, over the last couple of years, our department has utilized Wise Hive for our grants and neighborhood program applications. Prior to utilizing Wise Hive, we would have to print these huge binders for our neighborhood grants and applications and programs for each of our neighborhood advisory board members. That took up a lot of paper, a lot of printing, and a lot of staff time. But now that we've utilized this software, we're able to streamline our grant application process, as well as our grant deliberation process with the neighborhood advisory board. And as for fiscal year '26, we are focused on building upon what we've already established, and we're not adding anything new. But when we think about efficiencies, our 3-1-1 division has worked with departments to streamline processes and create efficiencies within our partnerships. And I did want to list a couple of examples. Within our partnership with HRCS, we serve as the initial intake and screening for all of HRCS cases. We update the callers on the status of their cases. We utilize MS Dynamics to coordinate and track cases, and that includes rental assistance, eviction prevention, utility assistance, tenant landlord complaints, and more. We do maintain the data for all those cases. We assist with ensuring status and follow-up of the cases that are current. We process and create cases for online tenant landlord complaint intake forms, and we've developed and customized and coordinate the reporting of the intake, status, assisted, closed, and expired cases for that department, so that they have more of a streamlined reporting process. So, number nine, are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? Yes. Number 10, are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing within this budget? I did say no, because in the last budget fiscal year '25, that's when we introduced the Office of Neighborhood Safety. We plan to push that forward within this fiscal year, and so we'll just be continuing that in fiscal year '26. Number 11, have you budgeted for the receipt of federal grant funds? No, we do not have any federal funds budgeted in our fiscal year '26, but if you know of any, please push them towards us. We will be happy to apply for them. What impact has the new BSA had on your department, and what issues have you run into? Have your employees had issues with BSNA payroll? We've adjusted accordingly to the new system. I will maybe be the only person who's seeing some praise to the timekeeper portion of it. I'm able to have two backups, and that has really been helpful for our department, as we did have a situation where two of our timekeepers were sick at the same time, but we had no issues with payroll or any of the other functions within BSNA, because we had that other backup. And so, so far, so good with us.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you, Delisa, for being here this evening. So, it's good to see her smile. Related to, I'll be brief. Related to the neighborhood grant program with the $20,000 increase to the neighborhood grants, which I know everybody will be very pleased of, as I know it's been a very successful program, and I know your team loves working with the community. It looks like you related to the budget and miscellaneous operating, just reallocated 20,000 from there to achieve that?
Correct.
Okay. And then also, it looks like there has been a approximately $22,000 decrease in retirement and city fringe benefits. Would that be due to some staff transitions?
So, we haven't had any transition, so I think Jake would be best to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, that would be a result of my calculations of retirement cost as a percentage of individual employee's salary, and so, yeah, I don't have the basis for that right in front of me, but I could look into the specifics of last year versus this year.
Okay, because I know we've been speaking about the increase in costs and benefits. So, this particular is just, if you could just share with that when you get an opportunity, the decrease?
Thank you.
And lastly, the City 3-1-1 services allocation. Could you speak to that a little bit, $37,000 to $3,500?
Jake actually did those calculations, so I'm going to push it over to him.
Okay, thank you.
These are calculations done with the gracious assistance of the 3-1-1 team in providing call data, but these were numbers that were called, updated to the latest number of calls from the previous year, as the program has developed and further expanded into various departments. And so, we ended up not going with the two-pronged approach. I think last year, we did both knowledge articles and calls. I think we chose a straighter, more straightforward route of just simply the call volumes, because of some feedback we received last time that sometimes knowledge articles were created but not particularly used. So, that's where the estimates came from, and so, we backed out calls that went to particular departments, but the phone calls were just immediately routed to them. So, these were calls handled directly by City 3-1-1, and you can share those numbers.
So, if I understand what you're saying correctly, is that the, because the City 3-1-1 is housed in the Department of Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement, so you're saying you recalculated if they just had a straight transfer through? If you could explain, because it's quite...
Yeah, so the City 3-1-1 operates as its own enterprise of serving departments, and so where other funds like our wastewater would charge its customers for its services, City 3-1-1's customers are city departments that are benefiting from having this public-facing component that knows the answers to many of the common questions that are referred to them.
I think a real easy answer is that it's based upon the number of calls.
Yes.
And so, our call number for 3-1-1 went down dramatically, and so therefore, the cost was...
Because I know the call volume from 3-1-1 has increased.
Correct.
So, that was my question. So, basically, within the Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement, people are more informed, less questioned.
There you go.
Okay, because it's a 90% decrease. So, thank you so much. That's all. Thanks for being here.
Councilman Spatterford?
Thank you very much, maybe for both of you or Jake. So, is 3-1-1's a million-dollar budget, correct?
That sounds about right.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So, was last year's, last year's numbers were based upon sort of a FTE allocation of 3-1-1 expenses? Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
Sure, that's all right.
Scratchy.
Last year's expenditures for 3-1-1, so every department had their enterprise line item for 3-1-1. It was based on, was it an FTE distribution of costs?
I think also calls, but also it was a half-and-half split between a number of calls and the number of knowledge-based articles. Those articles basically being a standard answer, is that the department has to respond to a department's questions.
So, these will be a rolling number, so the number for next year will be based on last year's call volume? Is that what's in the future?
Yeah, that's our proposal. I mean, it could potentially move into a structure of averaging it, but the general concept is a very reasonable and objective basis for...
So, a couple of years back, it was more of just throwing darts at a board, hoping we evenly distributed, and now it's being based on consumption and usage data?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I've got Councilman Brown.
Thank you. And to Councilman Spatterford's question, it provoked another question. I know that, you know, as we've rolled out the 3-1-1, all departments did not start your piloting and then adding more departments. Where are we at today with total departments versus...
I don't have a total number of departments, because I was so focused on these 10 questions. That's the only thing in my head right now. But I will tell you, we are currently working on building a partnership with EDP, with Parks, and an LPD in the future. But we are always working on developing those partnerships. But there are certain ones that we wanted to kind of take our time with, because they have more than just simple questions.
Do you feel like in this next fiscal year that you'll be adding some of those departments? You may need additional staffing, or how do you feel your staffing is currently in, you know, as far as the trajectory that you're going as well?
I think for this fiscal year, I'm pretty confident in our staffing levels. I do anticipate asking for additional staff the next fiscal year, as we look forward to being into the new City Hall and having a more forward-facing presence, because we will have in-person 3-1-1 as well as still on the calls. And so, next fiscal year, I'll be down here fighting for more staff.
All right. Sounds exciting. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Have a good evening, and we will move on to police, and I believe Chief Backus And Cheryl as well. I'm not going to try your last name. The green light is on. You can start with your questions when you're ready, Chief.
Absolutely. Good evening, council, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to present our budget to you. Seated to my right is our budget supervisor, Cheryl Rupert. She's responsible for the majority of putting our budget together every year. So, our budget this year represents essentially a status quo budget. It is a 3% overall increase from our year before. There are no changes in the services to our department this year, and there's nothing that is, there's nothing we've done in the past that's not included in this budget. We have no rate fees. There's no major equipment purchases. Our department currently does not use 3-1-1. There is one position within our department that's filled with a contract worker that is a FTE. That's the executive assistant spot in my office, and that position will be posted and filled by the end of this fiscal year. We do have grants that our department receives. None of those are included in our budget, and they are federal grants. We have had 22 total people leave our department this fiscal year. 10 of those are from retirement. In terms of increasing efficiencies, we continue to push and expand our online reporting options. We did... We did add online accident reports in addition to our online police reports, and we are also going to be launching this fiscal year a new records management system. It's from Axon, and it's designed to integrate with our body worn cameras, our fleet cameras, and also connect to our digital evidence, something that we use every single day. So, those integrations should improve our efficiency from our current record management system. We are able to perform all of our necessary functions with the budget that we have proposed this next fiscal year. We are not proposing any new initiatives. Our largest two contracts, our first largest contract is with Axon. It is an eight-year contract that was signed in 2022. And our second largest contract is our school crossing guards. That was attempted to be bid out last year. It's a very specialty service. We could not find anyone who provided that same service within our service area, so we awarded that contract to our previous vendor. Again, federal funds are not included in our budget, but we do receive multiple grants that are federally funded. And finally, BSNA. We have had complaints on BSNA. When we get those, we escalate those to both our finance and our human resources department. They have been responsive. It does represent a change from the way we've done business in the past, and we are still adjusting to that. And that's it for my questions.
Okay, I'm going to open the floor. Does anybody have any questions? Councilman Jackson?
Just really quickly, unless it's the federal grant, I did hear that there are two new patrol officers being added, and I heard you all say that there were no changes in status quo. So, I guess why would I or we support two new officers when we haven't closed the vacancy within two, five, six, it's always been at least that many vacant patrol officers? Why would we add two more?
Sure. So, the first part to that is that the two proposed positions are coming from the public safety revenue funding that's currently at the, in the legislature right now, and it has not been finalized. In terms of our vacancies, for our sworn staffing, we're sitting at 190 out of 212 right now. Now, that sounds like it's, well, it sounds like it's a mountain, and we've been dealing with this. However, I'm happy to report at this point, we have six people that are in our academy that will be graduating in May. We just finished our latest round of interviews, and we have moved 33 candidates to background. I'm very, very pleased with this round of candidates that we have, all 33 of them. The majority of them represent City of Lansing residents, veterans, and then a handful of them are former interns of ours that have just completed their four years of college. So, there is a path to this. I did note that we've had 20 people leave our department in the last year, 10 from retirement. The other ones have left to just leave the police and public service career field in general. Some have left to pursue federal jobs, and others resigned because they were in our training program and weren't passing.
And just really quickly, so, these 33 people, they could still take jobs at other agencies that either pay more for less work or hire more quickly than we do. Is that true?
So, these 33 peoples are for sponsorships, and we have a very attractive sponsorship for our city. We would pay for them to go to the police academy. And then with the new state laws, after we pay for them to go to the academy, they're obligated to serve a number of years with our department.
And just what's those, number of years?
You know, it steps down, and from memory, it's either three to five years, and then there's a cost for them to pay us back for the academy if they leave before that.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Cox. Thank you for being here, Chief. You answered all of my questions. Right before I asked them, I was going to talk about the 22 and the 12 additional laws attendant retirement and how many are currently in position. I will say to add to this is thank you for being accessible, since you've taken the role and really being engaged in the community. So, I have no further questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Hussein?
Yeah, and since we always have this staffing conversation, I always remind folks that, you know, the national standard, when you look at the nature of our city, the amount of calls, the population, demographics, et cetera, and maybe it's changed, but national standard has typically been about 1.7 officers for 1,000 residents. And so, we're looking at, I mean, if we were really going to, and I think a lot of, you know, folks that hear 212 sworn officers, and they think all those folks are dedicated to patrolling the streets of Lansing, which couldn't be further from the truth. So, we have command, we have special operations, we have all these different pieces, but in any event, so you're looking at about 274, probably 275 officers, if we were sworn officers, if we were really going to get after community safety, public safety, the way that we need to. So, you guys, what you're doing with the staffing that you have, I think is just incredible, frankly. Couple of things. One, you were copied on an email today, I don't know if you saw it, with regard to cold case. And there's been some efforts in the past to support, you know, that shop, if you will, if that's what you want to call it, very sparsely staffed. Where are we at with that? Would have been the results of maybe some enhancements within that shop, et cetera?
So, three years ago, we received a legislative grant for $75,000 to help support our cold case, and through that, we hired two civilians who were able to start reviewing our cases. That's really one of the primary things we have to do, is because we have roughly 80 people that are either cold cases or long-term missing, we have to find out what these investigations turned up before. So, while they go through those, what they do is they identify pieces of evidence that with our new technologies, we can potentially test. And so, we've found a number of cases where we've found evidence that we can do new and, I guess, technologically enhanced DNA testing, so that's happening regularly. We've also formed a partnership with the Michigan State Police and the Michigan State University School of Criminal Justice. Our criminal justice, our cold case homicide detective now has six interns from Michigan State University. They have an actual class for cold case investigations, and so they've picked up where that other group has left off by going through these different reports, breaking out the reports, identifying the people involved, even finding out if they're still in the area and alive. And on top of that, we've now put ourselves in the same arena as the Michigan State Police, which opens up the door to a lot more resources and a lot more technology. So, I'm confident that soon I'll be able to share with you some of the results that they've had, and I think you'll be impressed with it. Can I just add one thing? The cold case homicide detective is beyond dedicated to her role, and if you look up our website, you'll find that just within the last week, she has redone our entire website, and she's refreshed all of our long-term missing and homicide victims, their profiles, their pictures, and she maintains contact with the families on anniversaries, on important dates, and lets them know that we have not forgotten about their loved one.
And I certainly don't want you to think that I implied that. She is incredible. And I, so, but I also know that, three years ago, we were talking about, bottom line, she had an impossible task. So, the fact that you've been innovative, self-partnerships, and additional dollars to support is phenomenal. I always ask this as well, where are we at? How many districts do we have again for CPOs?
We have 12 different districts.
12 different, and right now, how many vacancies do we have?
We have six vacancies.
Six vacancies, okay. And then the only other thing is, I just want to say, we've worked with a few chiefs, all fantastic, but I just have to say, man, the responsiveness, professionalism, your ability really to talk to everybody, to include everybody kind of across the city, it's not going unnoticed, number one. I think it's having an impact as well across the department, like trickle-down. So, I just want to say, I appreciate you, man. I really do. Thank you so much.
I appreciate that, sir.
Okay, internal auditor, nothing. Do we have any further questions for the chief? Okay, seeing none, I want to thank you both for staying so late and providing us those budget questions.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to economic development and planning. We've got Raleigh Van Fossen here for this. Green light, and when you are ready, sir.
All righty, I am ready. Thanks for having me up again. For those who don't know me, mainly for folks in the audience who are watching from home, I am Raleigh Van Fossen, Director of Economic Development and Planning, and excited to be here tonight. And withstanding history as of last year in my first budget presentation, I'd like to just take a moment and introduce all of my division leadership who's joined me tonight, and they're so excited to be here into the evening hours. But I do that on purpose, because as you'll see and we'll go through the questions, EDP is comprised of six different divisions as long, as well, and on top of some key partnerships throughout significant entities, and that totals over $24 million that throws through this department. And as much as I like to think I might know everything and so forth, this job is, I'm incredibly thankful to the handful of folks who've joined us tonight. So, that's Hal King, who runs our parking services division, Sue Statuak, who runs our planning and zoning office, Aaron Butendorf, who you saw earlier today, who runs our community development division, John Snyder and Tina Rader with our building safety office, Meredith Johnson and Tom Berry with our code enforcement division, as well as Amber, Charles, and Tiffany, who are joining us tonight from the Office of Financial Empowerment. And so, those folks, along with close to just over 90 employees throughout the department, and we surpassed just over 100 during Lugnut's baseball game with some of our seasonal parking staff, those are really the true folks who work the day-to-day, and I just get the honor and privilege tonight to answer some questions on their behalf. So, I'll dive right in to the questions provided to me ahead of time. What was the difference within your budget from this current fiscal year to what you see before you proposed? In general, I think you've heard from some of my other colleagues, there's some significant cost of living adjustments, both through reclasses, you know, within our division of over 90 folks. We are proud to have members of the UAW Union, Teamsters 243, Teamsters 214, as well as a handful of non-bargaining and contractual positions, but we have seen some reclasses this last year that have certainly impacted our payroll line item going into the next year. Outside of that, and you'll hear me talk a little bit tonight, we have some additional differences in some of the capital improvements requests, mainly for parking services, as well as fee change requests, both in parking and our building safety office. And then we are fortunate to have received support from the mayor's office to add an additional premise officer in our code enforcement division. Are there any changes of service to your department, and if so, why? I will note the couple, two of which are ordinance changes that have passed through this body, and so that's first and foremost, revising and further monitoring signage in our right-of-way, and so that falls under the discretion of EDP as well as public service to assist in enforcement. So, that's been a change of service largely for our zoning corridor specialists. Recently, you've passed an unregistered vehicle ordinance. I bet you're taking up a fine here just after me tonight, and that's going to have an impact and change into what Parking Services is able to assist with the Lansing Police Department. And then lastly, having received and welcomed the Office of Financial Empowerment Center into our team this past summer, they have successfully relaunched the Financial Empowerment Center. That's that direct one-on-one financial counseling service provided at no cost to city residents that successfully relaunched this past fall in October. Are there any programs that we've done in the past year that I'm not including in next year's budget? The short answer to that is no. Are there any rate or fee increases and why? There are two, as mentioned. The first you see in the current budget book is Parking Services. Reasons for those fee adjustments are, one, as a result of the fee study that was completed just as I entered into the team a year or so ago. And then the second that you don't see, but you will in a substitute, is the building safety fees. We are adding a handful of electrical permit, new fees, as well as mobile home new fees. Again, those are permits within the building safety office. Any major equipment purchases within our budget? We are piggybacking off of an effort we've launched this year successfully in the building safety office, and that is deploying iPads to all of our building inspectors and various trade inspectors. What that offers them and what we're carrying forward in next year's budget is to do the same for all of our code enforcement staff. Currently, everybody's provided in the city with a laptop, and that is a helpful tool, but what a laptop doesn't do that an iPad can do for our inspectors currently, and then hopefully our code officers in the future, is interacting with BSNA onsite at the property in a much more effective way, including taking pictures. You know, currently, code officers are taking pictures on a digital camera to then go back to the office, to upload those pictures to a computer, to then go into BSNA, and so on, and so on. This effort and request on equipment will hopefully streamline that more so that they can be in the field. And then lastly, there's a handful of capital improvement requests for Parking Services, as you'll see outlined in the budget book. That includes enhanced lighting at the Lansing Center for the parking asset that we control and maintain, various air chiller improvements throughout our assets, ramp maintenance, ramp washing, striping throughout our assets, upgrading signage throughout our assets, and then a vehicle replacement, specifically the three-wheeler you may see going throughout our downtown. So, if successful, we'll hopefully be replacing that with something new. What impact has 311 taken on our department and staff, et cetera? As you've heard from Director Fontaine, her team is currently working with both our community development division, that's Aaron, as well as Amber's team at the Office for Financial Empowerment, to further onboard how 311 could assist their teams in taking daily calls. We're starting with those two divisions, but are excited to continue working with 311 to expand effort throughout the other divisions. Some will be able to work with 311 better than others. For example, with assessing, or as the city attorney mentioned, our building safety office and our code enforcement office, there's going to be limited questions and so forth that 311 can do for us, but we'll still engage in that partnership and conversation. Any eliminated combining or of contracting of positions in the budget, and if so, why? We are not eliminating or combining of contracting positions. In fact, it's the opposite. You'll see in the current budget book that was presented to you tonight includes the additional premise officer within our code enforcement division. More specifically, if passed by you, that will bring us to five premise officers. Currently, we have a budget for four. How many employees have left the department in the last year, and how many were due to retirement? We've had 12 folks leave the department. Out of those 12, seven were retirement-based, one unfortunately passed away this past fall, and then four either transferred internally within the city or took a job elsewhere. What, if any, operational changes have we made to become more efficient? Were there any savings? Again, you heard me talk about deploying iPads throughout our building safety office. While there may not be an immediate cost savings to the budget, it provides a savings of time to the customers that that office sees, and meaning they can do more and complete more inspections than they would have normally been able to do not having those. And then as well, in our Parking Services budget, our EV parking enforcement, having that tool, as well as our unregistered vehicles tool, will be operational changes, because there will be additional enforcements that our officers within Parking Services are able to take. Can we perform all necessary responsibilities? Yes, but I do add a note that with significant growth and development happening across the city, there will be a continued effort to need to maintain that at the EDP department level, and that's certainly a balanced approach, and that's why we're fortunate to have received the request for an additional premise officer in next year's budget. Any new initiatives or services within the new budget proposed? Short answer to that is no. The next question was, what are our two largest vendors? This was an interesting one to answer, just because out of the six divisions are so different, so I actually listed five, and that's largely just because of each division. So, within code enforcement, that would be Pro Soil, who does our boardups after hours, as well as Eric's Refuse, who takes care of any trash abatement. Pro Soil's contract was bid out last in '23 and is good until '26. Eric's Refuse was bid out in '22 with the contract allowing for four one-year extensions up until concluding in '27. We did recently, this last year, extend that into October. We do have intentions for our trash and grass to go out this summer for bidding. Within Parking Services, the two largest vendors would be Flowbird, which has our kiosks. Those were purchased in 2017, as well as T2 Systems, which is our citation software, and that was purchased in '21. And then lastly, with Office of Financial Empowerment, the largest vendor would be Michigan State Federal Credit Union, as they deploy and deliver our Lansing SAVE program in Lansing schools. Have we budgeted for receipt of federal grants? Of course. You got to hear from Aaron and Doris earlier today with our annual action plan, and so EDP on an annual basis receives from HUD in average around $3 million, and that's CDBG, home, and emergency solution grants. Are we monitoring some of the current discord happening with our federal partners? Absolutely. Is it difficult to plan accordingly for that? Absolutely. What I can say is if there's any reduction or, God forbid, complete elimination of those dollars, we, like many communities across the United States, are going to be in a tough position. Those are dollars that support not only subrecipient grants out into the community for critical nonprofit work, but they also provide dollars for administrative and program delivery at the department level. And so, if we get to that point, which I try not to hope and think we will, we'll have to work closely with the administration, closely with you all, closely with our union partners, to figure out what's next. There's not a lump sum of general fund dollars in EDP waiting to backfill those dollars, which is why I can encourage and say here tonight, those dollars are critically important to our community, and we'll do what we can to fight to ensure that HUD remains investing in those programs. in those programs. Lastly, what impact has the new BSNA had in our department, and what issues, et cetera? You've heard from others, and I'd like to say the same. It's been a large and long implementation, moving from .net to the cloud with BSNA. We are one of the first communities, to my knowledge, in the state of Michigan that BSNA is doing this with. I can say, after close to, we're almost up to a year in June of doing that, we've made it through most of our challenges. There were certainly some immediate issues, but I commend folks on the Finance Team, on the HR Team, and on the IT Team here at the city, allowing EDP the opportunity to voice those concerns and quickly responding, pulling together leadership at BSNA in a moment's notice. But issues still remain. We have an active list with BSNA of challenges that are at their development stage, working with their partners. One currently that I know impacts a lot of you and the work you do, and folks watching from home, is that all of Code Enforcement's enforcement that you're used to seeing on the public side of BSNA has since removed. There were some unfortunate items internally that were being put publicly out there, so we had to remove that to keep the integrity of our enforcements, but I received news from BSNA last week that they intend, that they have fixed that and intend to see that that update go back live in their April 14th, or April 15th update. BSNA does monthly updates to their system across their platform, so it's not as if we can get them to update that same day. Regarding payroll, again, like others, we've had some immediate, or some initial, sort of getting accustomed to what the new system is. I believe most all of those, at least anything, I don't have any remaining payroll items on my list to help address, but again, I, huge shout out to Elizabeth and her team, Brian Kaufman specifically, who I know fielded quite a bit of requests early on from us.
And Raleigh, I'll just mention that the enforcements are back up on the far end.
Even better.
As you know, I'm a daily checker of things on the BSA. I want to remind folks, we still are in Committee of the Whole, and we still have several items left, so City Council has not started yet, we are still in Committee of the Whole. So with that, do we have any questions for the Director? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Cost, and Raleigh, thank you for being here. This question may be more related, Jake, connected to this department as well. When I look at, related to the software, maybe you can help answer this question. The IT Department, the Director came, indicated it was a $550,000 increase in software due to external factors that we can't control. We spoke about it a little bit earlier. And you familiar?
I think if we're looking department-wide, it'd probably be the inclusion of the Office of Financial Empowerment within their budget this year, increasing the number of personnel and devices on that side of the count. That'd be my ballpark guess, but there might be specific allocations of...
Of the $500,000 for the software for the IT Department?
Yeah.
So when the Director of IT came forward, they indicated because of external outside of the IT budget? It says, "Software, 3.2 million up to 3.7 million?"
In the IT budget, right?
Yes, are you saying that?
Sorry, I was looking more in, within the EDMP budget, but yeah, so they talked about, the IT Director talked about some software increases, and yes.
Okay, so related to this department, in building code, it looks like for IT allocations, additional $45,000, admin and planning, $42,000, and financial empowerment, $16,000. Additionally, in the LDP, Police Department, it looks like additional $400,000. The Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement Department, 800, or excuse me, $8,000. The City Attorney's Office, $31,000. The Assessors, $23,000. So my question, it looks about $565,000 in additional IT allocation, but when he came down here and provided testimony, he indicated that they're requesting $550,000 more for additional software. So my question is, what is the cause of additional five, half a million dollars plus with IT allocation in each department that has come and provided testimony this evening?
I could provide some more specific numbers, but among the various factors of the IT allocation is whether or not there is a discount given based on the accumulated reserves of the IT fund from charging in previous years. And so a few years ago, they had a fairly high fund balance, and were drawing that down to get to a level that is a reasonable amount to ask of other departments. And this year, they're charging the full amount of their budget, having provided that change. And so I would say it's probably a combination of those factors of the year-over-year increased cost, whether it's the just personnel increases due to collective bargaining agreements, any reclassifications and reorganizations, as well as just software increases projected, and whether it's status quo or for additional software. And so IT keeps a fairly robust list together of what programs they have projected for all departments, and so that's a breakdown we can definitely provide.
Councilman Brown, I've actually already requested from Jake that we get a breakdown, for example, of City Council's IT budget, of what we're actually paying for in that, I think it's $88,000 amount, to better explain, I think, probably all of these IT budgets. If we can just look at ours and know what it breaks down to, I think it would make more sense on these.
And I definitely understand, but I know each department, as he's indicated, is also different, so if he is able to provide, because $565,000 for these, and I'm assuming we have the additional hearings, each department will have that additional cost. I do appreciate the explanation that they may be using their other funds, but if possible, I would like to see the breakdown for all the departments, just to kind of understand what the total additional cost or request for allocation is versus each individual department. Of course, our department is the leanest, so the information for our additional charges may be a lot less cumbersome, or not the full itemizations of some of the more robust departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jake. Do we have any further questions? Councilman Hussein?
I actually have a bunch, but I'm, due to the time, I'm going to hold off on a few of these, and certainly circle back at another time. But I do have one. We, I gotta be honest with you, Raleigh, I don't know that our city's looked worse than it looks right now. If you, if you know, if you make a practice driving up and down residential corridors, commercial corridors, that type of thing, and doing some of the work that we do, it's in rough shape. One of the things, among many, and so again, had a ton of questions written down, but this is one I forget what the answer is. Was it a budgetary consideration? What was at play when we decided that we were no longer going to have your shop enforce public right-of-way trash? Was that a budgetary consideration, or was there something else that factored into that?
It wasn't budgetary, to my knowledge, more in terms of legality behind public service being the entity to enforce right-of-way, and love to pull on my fine colleague in the City Attorney's Office.
I'm happy to discuss this at some length. I've been looking at this from a question from President Cost. I know that there, part of it has to do with where the division of duties lies in the ordinances, and part of it has to do with the legality of enforcing as an abatement as opposed to enforcing as a fee-for-service. And I can, we can talk about it a whole lot more.
Okay, whatever the answer is, what we're doing's not working. And I think, you know, here's a reality that some folks, and we know that the vast majority of citizens in the city of Lansing are incredible, and they take care of their premises and things of that nature, but you know, the few bad actors that we do have that unfortunately create some wide-reaching impact, I think they've learned that, you know what? It doesn't seem like the right-of-ways are being inspected and enforced, and so we're just going to push them. You talk about livability, you talk about health and safety, you talk about property values, you talk about aesthetics, you talk about, I mean, this actually plays into all of that. So we need, we need a solution, and if that means that public services is going to come before us and say, "Look, we need additional dollars for public right-of-way inspectors", great, but what is the answer? Because it's a mess out there. Thank you.
I would note, from a department level, if we're, you know, we stand behind, if, you know, if the City Attorney's Office and others at the city can sign off that we're able, we stand behind, ready and prepared to be able to. And I've shared those concerns with the administration, with the mayor, with Greg and so forth, but...
Okay, and I'll, one more question, okay, President Cost? Why have we not seen fit to at least consider additional, I mean, I think even in some of the documents, it talks about that it was actually the transmitted letter, as a matter of fact, because one of our priorities as a City Council the last few years has been to get our, you know, obviously it's the position, not the person, but to get Mr. Zach Driver some support. This is a big city, we have many, many miles, as we know, of commercial corridor, major road here in the city of Lansing, he's got a big, big job. And I understand, I think, the value of adding a fifth premise inspector, but I can't, for the life of me, understand why we haven't provided that position, more support to do what they, what he absolutely needs to do. We've been on ride-alongs with him, we've talked to his supervisor, Ms. Susan Statuak, he needs support.
Sure.
So what does that conversation, what does that look like?
Sure, absolutely. You know, first and foremost, you've got an incredible, difficult job, just as administration does with limited revenues available. You know, I could sit here tonight, the mayor's heard me say this, that we have love, you know, another dozen or so, if not half dozen, you know, members to join EDP on the enforcement side, but the dollars just aren't there at the moment. So in terms of our approach to premise, whether it be commercial or residential, you know, I came in a year and a half ago and inherited a department that had leadership, that drew the line with code, and said, "If you're on codes team, you don't touch commercial. And if you're on zoning team and being the only person, everything then commercial is onto you." Yet when we looked into it further, they have the same certifications, same designations, nowhere in ordinance, does it eliminate or hard-stop codes' ability to support? And so in the discussion we've had, when looking at your, you know, council's priority in terms of maybe additional support for commercial corridor specialists or like, you know, at the department level, we saw better benefit to adding a premise officer who have the same certifications, who certainly will be able to continue assisting us in those commercial areas. And that's a leadership change, and that's a direction change that the department is still working through over this last year. It's not a perfect solution. I think the perfect solution is going to be needing a greater enforcement team to manage the day-to-day, but I have to work in the revenues available, and certainly the partnership with the administration, and also all of you. So I see Zach getting support, I see that position getting support through the entire code team. You know, these are, they might be trivial in terms of budget numbers, but things that are happening now and have been in practice, is on a regular basis, the zoning team attends our weekly code staff meetings. In fact, there's a dedicated code staff meeting once a month to zoning issues specifically, and that includes commercial properties. I think the folks behind you, if they were up here at the microphone, would tell you they're getting more accustomed to leaning off of just enforcing on residential, and now getting a better handle to enforce on commercial. Again, it's not a permanent solution on my end, but it's certainly reworking the tools I presently have available.
Yeah, and what I would say is, and I appreciate that, because really what that is, is a swing of the pendulum, because actually, that's how it used to be done.
Sure.
And what we wanted to do when we actually supported, because that came from council, this idea of a corridor inspector, that was after talking to our code officers and our premise inspectors, who were having an incredibly difficult time doing what they needed to do in the residential areas, because they were constantly being pulled off of. And so, and I get, I get the idea of, or I should say, the issue of limited dollars and things like that, budget constraints, but it's also about prioritization and putting the first thing first. And we look at our commercial corridors, and we look at, you know, our neighborhoods, and we look at, obviously, the upkeep of those neighborhoods. When we look at, and a lot of it's from your shop, Francher, obviously LPD with Public Services, LFD with, I should say, Public Safety Services, LFD with Public Safety Services, but also your shop with Economic Development, Vagancy and Vitality of the Community, I mean, so much right jumps from that. Would love to be able to drill down a little bit on BSO, as well as, you know, we've had some really good conversations, I think, but also, what is that, what are the internal controls, what is the structure, right, what is the back and forth between those two shops? But all these things are so critical that I really think these things need to be prioritized, and we need to find solutions. I mean, I can look at, I don't want to take an axe to the budget, but I think everybody up here at this stage could say, eh, you know, that particular position and that particular shop probably could go away.
Sure.
You know, in order to prioritize these things. So, and I think Ms. Stanaway, and I'm sure she's out there somewhere, comes up to the podium every single year and says, "Look, I found, you know, a bazillion dollars of savings, we could prioritize some things that really need to be prioritized, and what I'm telling you as a councilperson, who's been doing this for a while, those things need to be prioritized moving forward." Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor?
And I'll be quick, I know you're, just so everyone understands, the conversation that Raleigh and I had was, I said, "Council has requested this, I agree, we should have another, we should have another person checking out all of our corridors and things like that." Again, with very limited dollars, this is one of the ones I gave the checkmark to, and Raleigh convinced me that the pendulum swing swung, and that if we put a new premise officer in, they can help Zach. They can be part of their job, he can work that through. So I do think we're getting what you're asking for, and then some. Now, that doesn't mean it's 100% of time. That person's going to, is going to jump in wherever, you know, as they need for premise, and then we can have premise folks do corridor. So again, I agree with council, and in the resolution you put forward, and then Raleigh convinced me that because they can do everything, we should be more general, and then he and our folks that direct them can prioritize, you know, what that need is. So I'm with you 100%, I know Raleigh is with you, and again, the pendulum swing, the allowing, the removing, the being horizontal instead of vertical, I think is really helping that department. Thank you.
Right. Do we have any further comments, internal auditor? Okay. Raleigh, I appreciate you coming down. We're going to keep you here, because you're going to be doing our last item, and we're going to move on to item six, Discussion/Action. Item F, Resolution to Set a Public Hearing for Fiscal Year Budget 25-26. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I make a motion to set the public hearing for the fiscal budget of 2025-2026 for May 5th.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes. Next, we are on to item G, Resolution to Set a Public Hearing, Ordinance Amendment for Readoption of Codified Ordinances.
Yes, I'll make a motion to set the Public Hearing Ordinance Amendment for readoption of codified ordinances to be set on May 12th.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes. Next, we are on to item H, Resolution for Fines for Ordinance 1329 Street Parking. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I make a motion to approve this resolution for fines of ordinance 1329 Street Parking.
Okay, and we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes. Next, we are on to item I and J, and we have Mr. Van Fauzen again here to present his findings on CDDM Corporation, commonly known as Centerfold, on their cabaret and liquor license revocation. Sir, I will turn the floor over to you for your findings on the hearing.
Thank you. So I'm here to present my findings of fact, as well as my recommendation, which you've all received a copy of, I believe is in the packet for tonight as well. I'm going to speak in summary of what you've received, and certainly am available to answer any follow-up questions. I will state from the beginning, there are certainly some details of what the hearing involved, including more specifically to some of the witness testimony and exhibits. I'm going to defer from, or refrain from getting too far into some of that specific, just for in context of the public listening and attending. And so if you ask a specific question, you may hear me refer you to said specific exhibit or transcript in terms of how my hearing was conducted. But in summary, so on March 25th, we did hold a hearing here at City Hall. In attendance, you'll see, was our court reporter, who graciously transcribed all of what took place over the course of the hearing. We did have representatives from the city side, including our deputy, or Chief Deputy City Attorney, Lisa Hagan Lawrence, as well as two witnesses from the Lansing Police Department. We did not have anybody from the respondent in attendance to the hearing, but we did move forward. In large part, you know, the question asked before me as a hearing officer to consider the revocation of the cabaret and liquor license at this address was insightful. You know, certainly, it laid the ground for the revocation to occur. That's clear, and was made clear to me, both in the hearing and after review of the exhibits, that is within your purview to request a hearing, let alone for me to make these summaries and conclusions. I'll outline specifically in short some of the things that stuck out largely to me, and where I drew my conclusions from. First and foremost, this operation and this business has been longstanding, and so they've had years to prove themselves. It was clear to me, first and foremost, that there were three homicides throughout its 10-year. Homicide number one occurring in 2006, the second in 2013, and then unfortunately, a more recent homicide this past February. Those are clear nuisances, in my opinion, two of those homicides... Two of those homicides occurred within, inside the establishment. It was clear to me in my exhibits and the testimony provided that there were no clear security measures prior, or from guests entering the establishment to limit any sort of weapons like guns from entering. Unfortunately, since that did not happen, that was a causal impact and effect into the incidents. Further nuisances, though, as described to me in the hearing and the exhibits transcribed, that includes an instance in March 20th of 2023, where the police department was dispatched out to the property for an unwanted guest. Unfortunately, that was, that guest was unwilling to leave, further arrested, and did assault one of our police officers in that act. Second nuisance occurred in June of, June 29th of 2024. Again, police department was dispatched this time to Sparrow in response to an assault that was occurred at that property. And then later, on the same homicide that occurred in February, after additional, after review of security footage by the licensing police department, additional nuisances were discovered that evening. There were three, three instances of sexual conduct that took place, as well as drug, drug use. Again, that shows me a clear history of violations occurring, certainly not a welcoming environment, neither of which cabaret license or liquor license outline as wanting. But really, what stood out to me in summary was the lack of concern from ownership to address these over time. You'll see in my conclusion, and I'm going to read a bit of it, just for the members here tonight. The Lansing Code of Ordinance language regarding cabaret license revocation is clear when it states that a license holder is required to prevent violence or violations of law from occurring. Similarly, the Lansing Code of Ordinance language regarding liquor license revocation is also clear that a license may be revoked if certain conditions exist. Based on the findings presented in the hearing, I believe that there is substantial evidence demonstrating a pattern of violent incidents, legal violations, and ongoing security concerns at the premise. The establishment has been a site of at least three documented homicides. Additional incidents and violations have been reported that are indicative of fights, brawls, and other disorderly conduct. Additionally, law enforcements has reviewed video surveillance, as I've mentioned, showing multiple overt sexual acts occurring on the premise. Despite repeated incidents of disorderly contact, the business, in my opinion, has failed to take corrective actions, such as enhanced security to screenings, hiring additional security personnel, or enforcing stricter entry policies. This business has failed to appear at the hearing to provide a defense or rebuttal against the allegations, further suggesting noncompliance and disregard for their obligations. These events demonstrate a continued failure by CDDM Corporation to maintain a safe environment for patrons and staff. I leave you with in conclusion, the overwhelming evidence of violence, illegal activity, and noncompliance clearly demonstrate that that continued operation of this establishment poses a significant risk to public safety. Noting the severity and frequency of these violations, as well as the establishment's failure to take corrective action, I do recommend that this body, the Lansing City Council, revoke their cabaret and liquor license held by Centerfold slash CDDM Corporation. Revocation of both of these licenses, the most appropriate course of action to protect our community and uphold the integrity of our city ordinances. Be happy to take any more specific questions.
Do we have any questions for the hearing officer? All right, I've got Councilman Jackson, followed by Councilwoman Hallie Vonaglue.
Thank you. This might not be for the hearing officer as much as it's for the city's attorney's office. When we, just about the notice and the due process, we heard some complaints. I did look through the packet, and I do see this, what appears to be a certified mail receipt from March 15th, with a signature that, you can't tell, because where it says printed name, it's also a signature. But either way, it looks like someone received it. Can you speak to the notice as it comes to this hearing? And I would say that, although I do appreciate the notice and due process is a concern here, I did see and hear about the hearing on TV and in the news for some weeks even before this. So there's, there's notice, and then there's actual notice and constructive notice, and I wonder where we're at on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'll let Chief Deputy Hagan Lawrence answer the specifics. I will say that notice was provided by certified mail to two different individuals, and I'll, I'll let her give you that detail.
Yes, so as is indicated in your exhibit packet, notice was sent to the registered agent, the resident agent of the corporation, and that was at an address on Big Beaver Road, perhaps, my memory serves correctly. And then we also sent notice to the listed name on the cabaret license, which was at the establishment, 5910 South Pennsylvania. Both of those certified mail receipts came back indicating that they had been received.
And I guess, why, what's the reason for going forward without them there? If you could just speak to that. I know that you had the work that was done and, and notice probably proper, but was there any courtesy, like, hey, this is important, it's an established business for many decades, and I'm sure they have some interest that I'll just give a courtesy contact?
Yes, absolutely. So we did move forward with the hearing. I would note that, and I'm just going to try to scroll through here really quickly. The language of the ordinance indicates that the, the respondent may attend the hearing and may present testimony. So all that's required on behalf of the city is to provide the notice with the sufficient number of days, which was done based on those certified copies. So when nobody appeared at the hearing, it was a reasonable assumption to believe that the respondent simply did not want to engage in the process, and therefore, we moved forward with the hearing and presented the evidence that we were prepared to discuss.
And this might be for anybody, but the prior bad acts of 2006, I think that we heard that it was under different ownership or management or a different licensee at the time. Is there any comment on why 2006 issues that far back, I'm sorry, are in this, this case when it's supposedly different people?
Sure, sure. I can speak at least to the evidence presented to me during the hearing. The evidence I presented to me in the hearing was that a liquor license in CDDM Corporation's name was issued in 2002 for the establishment, in, as well as, well, their cabaret license has been, has been, was, is an effective date of May 14th of '24 through, through the end of this month. But furthermore, additional testimony was presented specific to an employee of, of the entity, and that is a Rick Johnson, and it's, it's reported in the evidence provided to me, has been the manager, at least, of Centerfold, previously called Cheetahs, since March 9th of 2006. So in my opinion, enough players involved in the time of 2006 are presently involved in the operations today.
Do we have any further questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, President Cost. My, my question actually had to do with the assertion of lack of proper service, and I think that's been fully answered. Thank you.
And, you know, I, I want to make it clear, I think I said in the, the hearing, it wasn't just the, the three murders that there was evidence of wrongdoing there. I mean, there was some very icky things that were described that happened in that building that's all in this packet, beyond just, you know, the violence. There was prostitution, according to both witnesses, and there was underage girls, according to one of the witnesses. So does anybody have anything further?
I think it's worth noting on the record, since we're still talking about this, there were, there were violations that included weapons, there was a lack of proper security to ensure that weapons weren't on site, those are violations of liquor law, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on here. I mean, as you've mentioned, we're pretty egregious, but there are also many other, other crimes and, or alleged crimes and situations that just are completely unsafe. They require mutual aid, and the entire Lansing Police Department that's on patrol at night taking public safety resources off the streets for, for other issues that happen in our city, whether 2006, 2013, or 2025, this is, is proving to be an establishment that just should probably not operate anymore.
Yeah. When you hear your police officers say that they don't want to warn because it's bad for business, checking for guns, that's a concern, so. Councilman Jackson.
So just because it's such an important thing, and I'm not, don't take this as an indication how I'm going to vote, but I do believe that there's been more homicides and calls for service in our very own Lansing Shuffle Playground Park in the sand, within a shorter amount of time. And I did read that there was a person who, some of the bad actions in the past, is someone who was disorderly and required the police to come to take him out, and they resisted a, a police officer. That's pretty normal, whether it's at a strip club, gentleman's club, a bar, or the street. So there are, since you have such, so many decades of, of just time, there are going to be things just about in any space, public, private. So, you know, I, I did see some of the findings of facts, and it is, it's a little bit closer of a call here. And I would also say, for all the gun people out there, that having a weapon, again, is not a crime, but using it maliciously is a crime. So arguably, people have concealed pistol license, that they can have a gun, they can even open carry. So I guess it depends on the establishment's policy, just like a person could walk into Capitol with a gun. So having a gun in itself is questionable, but I guess, you know, with the totality, I'm still heard everything and read everything, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. And to clarify, you can't have a firearm at a bar in the state of Michigan. Even if you have a concealed pistol permit, you can't carry a firearm into a bar. Just wanted to clarify that. Is there any further discussion on these items? Okay. So then, we're going to move on to item I, the resolution for the cabaret license revocation. Vice President Carter.
Yes, so in lieu of the, how the current resolution is stated, I have to make a motion to move the resolution for the cabaret license revocation, CDDM Corporation at 5910 South Pennsylvania Avenue, so that the council body can have discussion on whether we affirm, disaffirm, or modify.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes.
So I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution that the council body affirms the hearing officer's proposed findings of fact and recommendation.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place to affirm the findings.
And this will be effective immediately.
Effective immediately. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes. Next, we're on to item J, the liquor license revocation. Vice President Carter.
All right. I make a motion to move the resolution for the liquor license revocation, CDDM Corporation at 5910 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Lansing, Michigan.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes.
And I also have to make a motion to amend the resolution that the council body affirms the hearing officer's proposed finding of fact and recommendation effective immediately.
Okay, we have a motion in place to affirm, and immediate effect on this item? Do we have any further discussion? Councilman Jackson.
Just the immediate effect, I usually don't go for immediate effects just because of how immediate it is, so I probably won't do it here either. There's, there's a whole establishment of workers, you know, all these things going on, so I would not move for immediate effect.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, passes. There's no further business before this body, we are adjourned at 8:04. Ten-minute break, guys.